All right, we'd like to welcome everyone to our city council. We've got a full chamber tonight. We're excited. You'll be recognizing a few people. And we appreciate all those who are watching in TV land. So we've asked Morgan Olson if she'd come and give us an inspirational talk and her prayer. She's our Miss Spanish Fork if you couldn't tell.
Yeah, the sparkly hat helps recognize me.
Sparkly hat.
Alrighty, so it's gonna be super short and sweet and simple. But at the Miss Utah Competition 2019 Fall Workshop this past Saturday, Jessie Craig said something that stood out to me. And it was, "Trade your expectation for appreciation and the world changes instantly." And just in the few days that I have done that, it truly does change your world. Instead of expecting a warm house, appreciate that you have it. Instead of expecting to be able to serve your community, appreciate that you have the opportunity. And I just really love that. So trade your expectations for appreciation. Our dear, kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day and we thank thee for this wonderful opportunity to be a part of our community. We love thee so very much and we say these things in the name of thy son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thanks, Morgan.
Thanks.
All right, I've asked Councilman Mendenhall to lead us in the pledge legion.
Will the audience please rise and repeat the pledge after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a group here that we'd like to recognize. We'd like the Spanish Fork High School marching band. If all those guys would come in. Open the door and let 'em in. Nope, nobody's moving. Tell 'em, "Come on." Yes, we do. And welcome line up here. And then we're gonna let you be the spokesperson right here.
Okay. Am I talking to you guys?
Yep, you just, 'cause there's a camera right up there. The 10 million people that are watching will be focused right on you.
Great.
Yeah, just keep crowding right in. Awesome. Look at this. Isn't this awesome?
All the way in.
Yeah, come on in. Don't be shy or bashful. All right, we'd like to welcome you. You wanna tell us what happened here?
Sure. Uh, this is the second year of the Spanish Fork High School marching band. Is the Class 1A state champions. And we wanted to bring the students out so you could see 'em. These are, we're missing a few 'cause, you know, a few are on vacation and whatnot, but this is the majority of 'em here.
That's awesome.
And we were down in St. George on October 26th is when we were at the state competition and it was, man, it was close, but it was a good time. It was, it was really, a really fun time.
We're excited. You guys all rode on the fire trucks then?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Who'd they beat? Who'd we beat? Everybody?
Everybody.
Everybody.
There was about 12 bands at that competition in Class 1A and we ended up in the top bracket for the finals, so we performed in the morning and they did great. And then we went and took a couple of hours of R&amp;R and came back and did the finals competition that night. And they brought all the finalists out onto the field at Dixie State University. And they go through and announce the third place, second place and state champs and Spanish Fork was number one.
Awesome.
Will you tell us what 1A stands for?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, in marching band, the different classifications are done by band size. And so Class 1A is any band that's a size 45 or smaller. And then it goes up from there. The highest class is Class 5A and that's 127 band members or more. So it varies and it splits them up.
So it doesn't matter, like, if you're from a 4A or 5A school?
That's, that's correct.
Or the number of you that's in your band?
Correct. Yeah.
Congratulations, you guys.
Hey, congratulations. What I want, let's start right here and just say your name real loud. I want everybody to say their name so people in TV land can hear who you are.
I'm Brooklyn Harris.
Mike Harold.
Robbie Hunt.
I'm Emily Haraldson.
Emmy Reyes.
Christian Benetti.
Matthew McAllen.
Colton Engel.
Holden Beaus.
Brian Croft.
Ryan Whitaker.
CJ Pierce.
Caitlin Porter.
Troy Johnston.
Heidi Frillik.
Madeline Frillik.
Matthew Hunt.
Caleb Pollak.
Jeffrey Zess.
Spencer Gray.
Madeline Sizer.
Awesome. Just give 'em a hand here. Right here. Right here. You can start shaking hands and then when you just come through and shake your hands on your way out.
Way to go.
Congratulations. Love the jacket.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Great work. Nice job.
Nice work.
Good to go, guys.
Nice job. Good to go. Great job. Way to shine.
Congratulations.
Okay. Nice job. Way to go.
Good work, guys.
Love it.
Good work.
Good job.
Good work.
Congratulations.
Good work.
Thank you.
Nice job. Congratulations.
Good work. Well, uh...
That's nice and safe.
You have really brought this band.
Thank you, Morgan. Way to go. Thank you for looking at me and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. That's awesome. We always like state championships. And you can see that we have a diverse community and that's what we like to see here. Okay, next, we've got some, another recognition. You wanna come on up, introduce yourself and we're gonna let you tell what you're doing here tonight.
Well, good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Ken Jensen, Spanish Fork City Arts Council President. And Karen Bradford's with me from the Parks and Rec. She's our liaison and right arm in the arts. We wanted to come tonight and recognize and honor Bjorn Pendleton. If we can have Bjorn come on up.
Come on down here.
We're gonna, we're gonna embarrass him a little bit.
Good, he needs it.
Yeah, but, so Bjorn has served the Arts Council for quite a few years and, and he's retiring from the Arts Council. And so we just wanted to recognize his contributions which have been tremendous to this community. Just a few points about his tenure. He started out in 2004 through 2009 as the Spanish Fork Corral President. And then in fall of 2004, he became a member of the Arts Council. And he rose very quickly to prominence in the Arts Council.
He was willing.
He was willing, which I found is, is part of the requirement. Right. So in 2005, he was put in charge of the Arts Council and the sesquicentennial celebration, say that five times fast, for the city, which included a combined community choir with Paeson Civic Corral, Mapleton Corral, Utah Valley Children's Choir and Spanish Fork Corral. And he created and planned and oversaw the first Harvest Moon Hurrah Celebration, which we've been doing annually and has, has grown and been a highlight of the community. Then he was in 2006 appointed officially the president of the Arts Council, which over his tenure, he saw about a 20-fold increase in budget and growth of various organizations being brought into the fold. He created the mission statement, including goals and objectives to focus the efforts of the arts on growth, diversity. He organized the executive board, the member board and all the governance. Grew the Harvest Moon Hurrah, which in 2015 celebrated an 11-year anniversary. And he's brought in some top up-and-coming performers. Some may recognize names such as Lindsey Sterling, The Piano Guys, BYU Vocal Point, James the Mormon, and, and just has been able to organize and bring some, some up-and-coming stars into our community as well as had great community involvement from our local talent. He also helped to launch the Harvest Moon Theater Company in 2011 with myself and my wife, which added a, a comedic play to the, to the community annually. Oversaw the formation of the Nevo Philharmonic Orchestra until they decided to branch off into a multi-city entity. He coordinated bringing the community theater in, under the Arts Council, as well as the children's theater, the youth theater. Oversaw the Arts Council coming under the Parks and Rec, which has been a fantastic benefit and great support. Oversaw the expansion of the Youth, Youth Arts Festival, which now has annually over 1,000 youth over that two weeks that participate. He also helped to create and carry out the cultural arts education for adults. He helped out with communication and publicity and advertising with the popular A-frame at Macy's and, you know, the Arts Council section of the community website and, and the newsletter. And he volunteered many hours from his private business as a graphic designer to, to help us with many of those advertising efforts. He also worked closely with the Chamber of Commerce on projects that included downtown revitalization through the arts and the Chamber's pumpkin donation and decorations every year, which is a highlight. We always run out faster than, than we think. And then he's introduced plans and visions for Cultural Arts and Heritage Center, which we hope to someday be able to bring into the city. And just, he, he brought some storage facilities into the, the fairgrounds that have greatly helped and impacted our community. So we wanted to recognize him. We have a, a card from the Arts Council as well as gift certificates to the Hail Theater and Dinner. So we wanted to give those to Bjorn and recognize him before the City Council.
I say a few words after all that, it's almost like a funeral.
I can die now, right? No, thank you. Ken, I'll pay you later. No, I, just like any smart person that's accomplished anything realizes it's, it's because of so many other great people. You know, the amazing volunteers on the Arts Council and throughout the community. Karen and the Parks and Rec Department, the City Council who's always been so generous when I come begging for money and, or wanna do other things. Seth who, who, you know, was the first to be open to the idea of, of bringing the Arts Council in under the Parks and Rec Department. Obviously to my family, most of all for their support, but just this wonderful city too. I mean, I love Spanish Fork and that's something I've grown to realize even more as I've kind of put this, this volunteer time in and it's, it's a wonderful place to be and I, I love all the things that this city does and I love getting people involved in the arts 'cause it changes lives. And so it was all worth it. So thank you very much. It's an honor.
Appreciate that. Those are the great things we get to do here. Okay, let's move into our public comments. Anyone in the public there would like to come address the mayor and city council, please come up and state your name and you get a whole three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Ben Stanley. I'm a resident of Pleasant Grove, served on the City Council there. And I was recently nominated in the summer by Utah County to serve on the UTA Board of Trustees. And so I've been doing what's, what I've affectionately referred to as a consensus building and listening tour, meeting mayors and council staff, the public and cities all over Utah and Tooele Counties. To introduce myself, to answer questions people may have about our transit plans, about our tentative budget with UTA. UTA actually doesn't have a representative yet for Utah and Tooele Counties. You may have seen in the news or followed a little bit that there's been some drama associated with that particular appointment. And so the, the need to do consensus building and to encourage people to be vocal about the need for Utah County to have its voice and to have the voice of our choice is important. So just by way of really brief introduction, I, I'm an attorney. I graduated magna cum laude from BYU's Law School in 2003. Spanish Fork's very near and dear to my heart. My wife is a chemist for Young Living and works here in this city and loves her time here and makes, makes commute regularly to Spanish Fork. And we really appreciate everything that this community has to offer and we have a lot of dear friends in Spanish Fork. I've served as the president of the Utah County Rotary Club. I've been involved in leadership in various political campaigns and served as a chair of the Republican Party. And the service that I did in a, in the law capacity, early in my career, I represented United Airlines when they were in Chapter 11 bankruptcy, wrestling with a multi-billion dollar budget. They were losing $2 billion every year in the aftermath of the September 11 terrorist attacks. And so if you can imagine that kind of money, helping rescue them and being a leader on that team, I think appealed to our county commissioners. They saw my experience working with union employees as an asset for transportation in Utah County and to raise a voice for Utah residents to make sure our transit system is run well and is thriving and successful. And so I'm anxious to hear any questions you may have, answer any questions. If you have questions about the history of this appointment and why there's been a delay or if you have any questions about the budget, what would be most helpful for me and I think for Utah County and Tooele Counties is for those that care about transit issues, to let the governor know that you've appreciated the chance to meet one of the nominees from Utah County. We nominated two. The, the governor has heard some concerns from some people, wants unanimity, which I don't know that we'll ever see in our county, unfortunately. This is the nature of politics. And, and the law doesn't require that. And so Utah County's actually filed suit asking that the, the decision be made and that we get an appointment, that we have our voice since there are important issues coming up. We're selecting an executive team for UTA. We have budgets to deal with, a tentative budget of $450 million essentially for 2019. And so there's big decisions on the near horizon and every day that we don't have our voice of our choices is a tragedy and a loss for our county. So with that introduction, I'll send an email to each of you tonight just so that you have my contact information if they have anything you'd like to ask me at any time. And I'd love to hear what your concerns are, our thoughts are. If you have any questions tonight, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'm gonna run to another city. I'm trying to catch as many as I can each night. Otherwise, I'd love to stay. But thank you for your service.
Thank you for being here.
It's my pleasure.
The priority are emails.
Thank you.
You've emailed me and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thanks for the time, buddy.
All right, anyone else who'd like to come up and address the mayor and council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to council comments. Councilman Mendenhall.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a guest here for kind of the Spanish Fork Active and Healthy Minute that, that we seem to be doing every council meeting. The Active and Healthy Committee is going to meet next week again and discuss upcoming issues and, and ways we can continue to help our community be more healthy mentally and physically. Seth and I got the opportunity to visit the, the students of, the name is leaving me of the elementary school again?
Not East Meadows, Spanish Oaks.
I did say in front of 100 kids, East Meadows, and we were at Spanish Oaks, so that was a little embarrassing, but...
They corrected it.
They corrected it quick, yeah. But we got to spend some time up there. That's a school that is an all walking and biking school and no bus school in, in our community. And so they do a, a neat thing up there where every month they do an assembly and, and give away some, some books. And, and we were there to promote those kids being active and healthy as they, as they get to, to and from school and to be safe doing it. Susan Chapman and our group of, of qualified QPR trainers are continuing in the community to offer free classes. They've been to faith-based organizations quite a bit in the last couple of months that went to more than a few wards and stakes and taught the question, persuade and refer classes that help us understand and be better prepared to help somebody struggling with mental, mental health or thoughts of suicide. They taught one here at the city offices last week as well. It was well-attended and we're grateful for their service in, in doing that, for the Active and Healthy Group and for the city to help our, our residents get the help they might need. The other point of the Active and Healthy Minute that I'd like to bring up is my friend Lyle Timmons who came tonight. Lyle and I, I get the chance to meet with Lyle at least once a month and it seems like every other time I meet with Lyle, that bag that he brings with him just gets heavier and heavier. I don't, there's gonna be a certain point where someone's gonna have to carry that for you, Lyle. But he's kind of the living proof of our Active and Healthy movement that says age is just a number and, and how important it is in life to, to remain moving and, and active. He visits the, the Summer Games and a bunch of other games pretty regularly. And you can see by what he's gathering there that he comes home never empty-handed, Mayor.
Ever.
So, Lyle, if you'd like to take a minute and tell us where you were just recently and then bring up some guests that, that helped you get there, that would be great.
Okay, I have four competitions I go to. One is in Pasadena, California, which I got three gold medals there. And then I go to Elko, Nevada, which I got three more. And Ocatello, Idaho. And then the World Senior Games Huntsman down in St. George, where we had 11,300 participants this year. So I got three golds and one silver there. The goals are all in, all, all competitions in basketball, three-point shooting is one, free throw shooting is another, and then the hot shot where you have six spots on the floor. You shoot from each one, rebound your own ball and you have one minute. Then, then the best one I liked this year was softball. I finally got a gold in softball. I've been trying to do that for several years and we always wind up getting a silver. But I, the team I played with before from Canada told me they had three pitchers so they didn't need me this year. So I went down to St. George thinking I wasn't gonna play, but just in case, I took all my stuff with me. And it turned out there was, on the bulletin board, they needed a, a player. So I hooked on with this team and we went undefeated.
Yeah.
Wow.
Take that, Mayor. The team that said, "Lyle, no thanks, we don't need your services," he goes on the winning team.
There you go. It worked out really good for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's awesome.
And to do this, about two or three weeks before each competition, I have to have a state president that's nice enough to give me a key to the gym. So I go there to practice. But when you practice, if you don't have a rebounder there, you're chasing your ball down the whole time. And I don't chase balls down too good anymore. I'm 88, so... So I, the Valentine Boys win our award and they, they come and rebound for me two or three weeks before, each day before the competition. And I was talking with, with Mike and I said, "You know, I'd like to give those boys some kind of recognition. Do you have some kind of service recognition?" And he says, "Sure, we can do that from the city." So we decided we'd have the mayor give them a certificate and...
Come on up here, boys, and you can explain yourself. I, when Lyle said this, mentioned that to me, I made mention to the mayor that there were some, some great young men that have helped Lyle accomplish these goals. And, and he says, "Well, what'd they do?" And I said, "Well, they rebound the ball for Lyle." And he says, "Well, when I practiced my shooting back in the day," he says, "He didn't need a rebounder. Everything went in."
My nickname was Otto.
Yeah.
Automatic.
So he couldn't believe that someone needed rebounders, but he was excited to, that you guys were willing to come and, and if, Mayor, you wanna read the certificate of what it says to these young men? I think it's a great service you guys have done.
So this is what it says. "This certificate of recognition is awarded to and this is to Cody Valentine for service by rebounding the practice shots of Lyle Timmons as he prepares for four different competitions at the 2018 Huntsman World Senior Games." Signed by the Mayor Leifson. So Kyle, or Cody, is that you? Congratulations. There you go. There you go. Thank you for joining. That's awesome.
I'd like to present them with this. I've got their own medal and I had it to Riker. Lucas?
I had to jump up.
This guy was a little short when he started rebounding. Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You guys stand right here and Scott will get a picture of you standing in front of us if that's okay. Scott?
Yeah, come stand right here, right in front of the council. We'll collide in and...
Turn that way and he'll, he'll have a camera.
Come over here. So the Timmons, come and stand right here with them. All three of you. You're gonna face that way.
Yep.
Yeah, perfect. Come on. Today. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, boys.
Thank you, guys.
What's mom's name? While she's here, we gotta embarrass her a little bit. Katie?
Katie.
Raising seeds, good boys.
Great, great boys there. Great people here in our community. Thank you.
One other thing, Mayor. Had a meeting, a couple meetings with the League of Cities and Towns, but had one today that I sent Angie a couple of pictures of, that we had a, a few minutes to meet with Governor Herbert today up in his office. From, from left to right there is the mayor of Ogden, Mike Caldwell, myself, Mayor Pike of St. George, the governor, Gary Hill, the city manager of Bountiful, and Cameron Deal, the director of the League of Cities and Towns. Just wanted to publicly acknowledge the, the hospitality of the governor being willing to meet. I know our mayor has met with him quite a few times over the years and, and does meet during the session quite a bit. And as the mayor can attest, he is a supporter of local government, local representation, and that's where he comes from. Our discussion with him today was regarding population growth and, and housing issues, specifically, well, all over the state. But I was there to kind of represent what's happening in Spanish Fork, what we see in Utah County. You've all seen the, the, the numbers of, of what kind of growth we can expect coming our way in, in Utah County. And there'll be, you know, the, the truth of it is, there's going to be millions of more people live where we like to live. And a lot of that's going to be organic. We all sometimes like to think, "Well, those crazy Californians are moving in here and ruining our way of life." But a lot of that is our, is our, our kids, our kids and our grandkids. And so those issues we've discussed with the governor, we'll be discussing them with the legislature during the session of, of how to best, what manage that, that growth that's, that's coming not only in Salt Lake County as they repurpose some areas and, but, but down in Utah County where we still have some land to grow. And so again, I appreciate the governor. I know the mayor worked close with him as well and I passed it along to him of his leadership and help when we had fires down this way earlier in the year. And so we appreciate him willing to take the time. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Councilman Argal.
Thank you, Mayor. Just would like to report that the Mount Nebo Water Agency met and had their board meeting. Just to let you know that they're going forward as they continue to work to build a plan for groundwater management here in this area. And also that they are working to get a couple new members on this board so that we can grow those who are participating in this and a good board meeting, continuing, lots more work to do in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Councilmember Beck.
Okay, I have a couple pictures to share as well. Mike and Seth and I had an opportunity last week to stop by Diamond Fork Junior High, the seventh graders, and talk to them about local politics. And they were a really fun bunch of kids. The, the two things I took away from it... they are working to get a couple of new members on this board so that we can grow those who are participating in this. And a good board meeting, continuing, lots more work to do in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Councilmember Beck.
Okay, I have a couple of pictures to share as well. Mike and Seth and I had an opportunity last week to stop by Diamond Fork Junior High, the seventh graders, and talk to them about local politics. And they were a really fun bunch of kids. The, the two things I took away from it, Dell, they recommend having llamas at the rodeo, preferably with sombreros. And then they also said the playground at the library kind of sucks, so if you could work at getting, getting something better there. So, that's my feedback from those kids there.
You can't say that.
I can't say that.
You can't say that on TV.
Okay, edit that. They would like a new program.
Beep.
So, that was super fun. I, I love doing that. I've had the chance to go for a couple of years now, and, and they're fun to go talk to and, and, and talk about our local government. And I always leave them with, Spanish Fork is so great because of its volunteers. And if they can grow up and learn anything that we come and present to just give back to the community, whether it's in Spanish Fork or wherever they end up living, because that is why our community is so fantastic. And then I was able to go to a Women in Business brunch, and Wendy Osborne hosted that at Tabitha's Way. And as you know, Wendy is the, the co-founder there at Tabitha's Way, and they have a lot of needs here at this time of year. But she reiterated, she does get a lot of help this time of year. Don't forget them in the spring and summer when families are still in need. The average visit for Tabitha's Way from a family in need is only six times. So, it's a short-term help for hopefully a problem that they can help solve. Two really simple things that she suggested, if you ever can drop off, like, your garbage, not the gar, the Macy's plastic bags, your plastic ba, bags and egg cartons. That will save Tabitha's Way about $300 a month. So, if you have extra, you know, of those, just drop them off there. She's absolutely fantastic. And then a couple ribbon cuttings, I was able to attend Cooney Orthodontics right there. They're a new orthodontics over by Macy's and the new professional plaza there. So, we welcome them to the community, and Cookie Crave on Main Street. So, other than that, I think that's all.
All right. Councilman Scobes.
Mayor, the, a couple of things, the, no, just the one thing. The Veterans, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, the American Legion, as we talked about, Veterans Day was this last, well, technically Sunday, but Friday, all the schools were able to participate in that. The two organizations had participated in over 20 different assemblies and get-togethers with the kids. It sounds like a broken record, but really looking at, at the future of Utah County, certainly the future of Spanish Fork. Councilman Menahal talked about all those that are gonna grow up and stay here, in addition to those, those that move. And then what Councilmember Beck had talked about, we really do have a great future for our community. The kids have a great understanding, not just of our, of our government, but more importantly of volunteering and, and participating in, in acts of patriotism. And so, it was really neat to be able to spend time with them and to see that. The Veterans, in addition to, I think it was 23 or so different events that they did just on that, on that Veterans Day weekend, there was also a funeral. I think it was a Korean, Korean War vet. At any rate, they had a funeral that they had also gone and attended to. So, it was very active in the community, but great to see them working with the youth, helping teach them, teach them about patriotism, our country, and service in the community. Other than that, Utah Lake Commission and the Veterans, Veterans Council Meeting are both in December. So, those will be coming up. And then the Fine Arts Committee, we had just met this last week, had gone over some of the, the plays and things that'll be coming this year, as well as the, ah, I just lost the word.
Okay, forgive me.
All right. The, the youth, the youth classes, youth classes, adult education classes. Talked about the schedule upcoming for that for this next year. So, be on the lookout, those will be on the website and, and advertisements in the community. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Just dovetailing on Councilmember Beck with Tabitha's Way, just so everybody knows, she gave out 800 turkey dinners to those in need this last week, which is pretty awesome, you know, pretty awesome. So, we appreciate what she does and all that. Also, I had the opportunity to go to Park Elementary this week for the DARE graduation. Officer Peterson, one of, one of our great officers, he teaches the DARE program in every school. And so, I was able to come to their program as they, these fifth graders graduated. It's a 12-week course. And I'll tell you what, he does a fantastic job. Those kids love him. And they've learned a lot about the DARE program, getting away from drugs and, and alcohol, tobacco, and violence. And so, that was awesome to see what's going on in our community, in our school, with our fifth graders. And I appreciate Officer Peterson's efforts there. Also, last night, we were able to check the festival lights up there at the Canyon View Park, make sure they were working. They're working. So, come Thanksgiving, they will be on. So, make sure you come and go through that. That is an awesome event up there. Someone, you can take all your kids to, family, friends, and look for the new lights that were there. Each time, there's a different new light. So, see if you can find it. I won't tell you. You have to go there and find out. And finally, had the opportunity to go with the mayor of Payson and the mayor of Salem, to go to a couple of cities' council member, or council meetings to discuss some issues that we have that affects all of us. And I just wanna say right now how much I appreciate our city council members. I'll tell you what, you just saw how they all report back. They're different boards. Each one of them, I've assigned to meet a different board to be on. And then they report back and let us know what's going on. As I went to those other meetings, those council members weren't getting any information back on this individual or this topic we were talking about. And so, I, I just wanna tell our council members how much I really appreciate them, and for the efforts that they take, for the time that they take to go to these extra board meetings. Everybody thinks, "Well, you just come Tuesday nights for a couple of times, and that's it." But it's not. They spend a lot of extra time to extra boards, meetings, and responsibilities. And so, I just wanna let them know how much I appreciate you guys. I really do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, let's go to consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second. Motion by Councilman Menahal, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public hearings, ordinance Z12-18, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Maple Mountain at Spanish Fork, Platte End Zone Change and Preliminary Platte. Did I get it all?
You nailed it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The subject property in this case is located north of Maple Mountain High School. In fact, some land that the Nebo School District owns, I understand they anticipate using part of the parcel that we're talking about for some practice field. Some of their land actually is involved in the subdivision that we'll look at here in just a second. But the proposal, frankly, is pretty straightforward. The Planning Commission reviewed a preliminary platte in their meeting just a couple of weeks ago, recommended that it be approved, subject to the council approving the zone change tonight. All of the developed properties surrounding the subject property has been zoned R112 already. R112 zoning is consistent with our general plan. And staff certainly doesn't have any concerns at all in recommending that the proposed zone change be approved. You can see, this part of the project right here is, I understand that that land is still owned by the Nebo School District, but that the applicant had worked out a trade, so that some of their land will be developed. That is, the Nebo School District's plant, land would be developed with the project. They'd receive some other land in exchange for that, again, to be able to have additional practice fields in this area. Like I mentioned, subject property's north, just a little bit west of Maple Mountain High School. Kinda glance over that, just pictures of the vacant property. Talked about a number of different issues relative to the, the proposal. The applicant spent, in fact, a few years working out some issues relative to utilities and some existing irrigation infrastructure that's in the area. Those have all been addressed. Really, one thing that the Planning Commission zeroed in on, relative, again, to discussions that we've had about architecture and design, and maybe even Mr. DiMarco with Salisbury Homes wants to comment, talked about simply what the elevations of the homes will look like wherever they face a street. And rather than speak for you, maybe if you wanted to do, to, to mention what you're thinking relative to those things, that might be best. But that was really the only issue that seemed to be talked about in the Planning Commission meeting. And tonight, because this is a master plan development, we would ask you to take action on both the proposed zone change and the proposed preliminary platte for Platte End of Maple Mountain.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that would like to come up and address the mayor and the council on this zone change, you're sure welcome to come up. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Menahal, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
My only one question before making the motion is, and maybe I missed this in the packet, but along the, the road, I think it's 130 that I drive all the time, this development has that street being improved and that ditch being piped or whatever's there? I only worry about the streets that I drive on all the time, right, Dean?
Talking about the frontage beyond, think about this here.
Yes, yep. 130, isn't that 130 that goes by the high school there? So, right, that's the stretch right now that is pretty narrow when you get a 16-year-old kid driving their car.
Right.
And me being the responsible driver.
Um, I don't believe that, we've anticipated that Salisbury Homes would improve the north side of that road with this. Is that correct? So, this would be left to the property owner, which is the Nebo School District, to improve on that north side. At least, that's what's proposed tonight.
Is that section, the section where they turn in? This section? Is that?
Yes. So, their frontage, if you will, that would be improved, but not, what's between that and the improvements with the subdivision to the east?
Whenever the school district makes this into a field that they're going to use, we're gonna require them to improve that.
I think that's how it would work. Yeah, and I don't know.
It sounds like they want to do that as soon as they can with this trade, so I think it'll all be.
Because this is, that ditch, there is therefore irrigation of this, which will now be homes and a soccer field. That was my only question.
Good. Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance Z12-18, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Maple Mountain at Spanish Fork, Platte End Zone Change and Preliminary Platte.
Second.
So, I got a motion by Councilman Menahal, a second by Councilman Argal. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Menahal.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
That passes. Just to let everyone know, I should've mentioned, Councilman Gordon is out of the state for Thanksgiving, so we're excusing him tonight. But I think he's watching, because he keeps texting me and telling me stuff that I went, I didn't do things right, so. But we appreciate him, and hope he has a good holiday. Okay, let's move to ordinance A18-03, annexing property known as the Barrett Annexation.
Subject property in this case is a little bit south of South Lane, south into Main Street. It's not a large area involved, just about 10 acres. One thing that's a little bit unique with the proposal, the applicants have requested that commercial two zoning be assigned to the subject properties when they're annexed. And, you know, really, maybe without further ado, I'll just go back to this. We've talked about several different issues. Frankly, staff has no concerns with the proposed annexation. The Planning Commission likewise didn't express any concerns. Planning Commission recommended that the proposed annexation be approved, and that commercial two zoning be assigned at the time of annexation, and that's staff's recommendation as well.
All right. This also is a public hearing, so I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone that'd like to come up and talk about the Barrett Annexation, you're sure welcome. Well, come on up.
You gotta get a raise.
That's all right, we'll let you. Take your time, we're good. We always, I had to wait on you when I was...
It takes me time. I move about as small as a spail, about a pinch.
Talk about basketball. I used to play a lot of basketball with this young man in my backyard.
He took advantage of me.
I'm sorry, you weren't like that when we were younger.
He's a good ball player, let me tell you that. You kinda look up when you go to shoot your shots. It's like, somewhere, he's gotta stop up there. I just have a...
You go ahead and state your name.
Okay, my name is Kent McHale, and my father wanted me to speak in his behalf. And my father owns the property in directions in Spanish Fork, a little different, but it would be right there. And it's on the corner on the highway, right, yeah, right in there. My question is, how will that affect my, my father's entrance in there? Will that close it off in as much as he doesn't own that property there, or the city when they put in the trail and everything, and the bridge across there? They kinda indicated that, well, they, they made sure we had an access, and there's a little road going in there. But I'm just curious, will that impact our access in from that location there? It kinda looked like it could well do.
Once we get through with the public hearing here, we can, we'll have them address that, okay?
I just didn't know what.
We got your question.
I just got the cart before the...
No, no, you gotta raise the questions, and then we'll answer them.
Okay.
That's good. Thank you, Kent.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address this issue? If not, I'd entertain a motion to go out of closed hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, and a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Dave, you wanna address that question for us?
Yeah, this proposal just involves annexing land into Spanish Fork City. So, with this, there's no approval to make any improvements to the properties, no approval being contemplated even today to make any changes to the, the use of any properties. Of course, with their annexation into Spanish Fork and zoning that's distinct from what they have now in the county, they could make application and go through a process, and there could be changes in the future. But right now, this is just a matter of bringing land into Spanish Fork from Utah County.
And the rest has a good time.
Yeah, and I, I don't have any ideas to what the, the property owner's timeframe might be.
Right. So, that's an issue you can bring up when, when that time comes.
Okay.
Perfect.
Go ahead, my side there.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
I was doing all the time.
Great.
He's the guy that don't do the...
Well, you know, we like him, too. Okay, any other questions? If none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance A18-03, annexing property known as the Barrett Annexation.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Scobes. This also is a roll call vote. Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Menahal.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Okay, that passes.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Okay, ordinance Z-13-18, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Olson Development Zone Change.
There is a vacant piece of property at 99 North, 200 West, which is on the west side of 200 West. It's about a quarter of an acre inside, a little bit larger than that. And the proposal is to construct three dwellings on that property. Two of them would be in a duplex, a third would be a single-family home. That's the subject property right there, kind of where 100 North tees into 200 West. That's the current condition of the subject property, again, vacant. There are a handful of different issues that we've discussed with the applicant over a number of different months, and at the end of the day, really, the focus of our discussion seemed to be, you know, just what's the project going to look like? What, will the homes look like, landscaping and some different things like that? This image shows, to some extent, what, we're a pointer. Just to some extent, this is a little bit faint here, but this is a two-unit structure. And we'll look at some elevations in just a second. Single-family home back here to the west of this, so 200 West is out here. It'd be this driveway here that would provide access to the single-family home and one of the two units. Another driveway would be constructed over here to access that front of the two units in that building. So this is the two-unit structure, and this is what you would see if you were directly in front of the subject property looking due west. You'd see this elevation, and the intent with the design is to have it look like a single-family home. This then is the south elevation of that same structure, so this is the side that would face 200 West. And this is what you would see from the driveway that would go back to the single-family home on the west side of the property. This is the north elevation here. These are the elevations of the single-family home that would be built on, they call it kind of the backside of the lot. This is the elevation that would face 200 West, but again, it's going to be back, to some extent, behind the other structure. And maybe just to talk about some of the things that staff's discussed with the applicant, exterior materials that got a lot of attention. And these elevations do reflect the recommendation that the Development Review Committee made, which the Planning Commission concurred with, which is that the applicant construct the, well, I'll just say this building, the two-unit building, such that there is a brick wainscote along the entire east-facing elevation, and that that wainscote then would wrap around on the south side of the elevation, I'm sorry, on the south side of the building, along the south-facing elevation. And then on the north elevation, one small detail missing from this image, but there'd be that wainscote wraparound, perhaps back to where the fence would start on the lot. Maybe simply put, the idea is to have the applicants really put their investment in the building on the sides of the building that are the most visible. So the wainscote's only required per the DRC and Planning Commission's recommendations, again, along that east-facing elevation and the south-facing elevation. It's a little bit similar with the single-family home. The only elevation that really would have any prominence would be the, again, east-facing elevation, so the same recommendation was made there, that the applicants be required to have the brick wainscote there along that elevation. Beyond that, they'd use stucco on the remaining parts of the home, some type of hardy board siding, that's kind of an accent, and some other places as well. This image, again, just a little different look at what the applicants have proposed. Their proposal actually is a little bit different from what we're seeing here, though, in that this driveway would go directly out onto 200 West. You'd have a second driveway here. But as proposed, the project does meet the city's requirement for master plan developments with the infill overlay in the R3 zone. In this case, the subject property's already zoned R3, so the zone change, if you will, that is being requested tonight is just to have the infill overlay approved so that they can build that duplex at the density that's proposed as part of this project.
Okay. All right, since this is a public hearing, let's, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone that'd like to come and address this property, feel free to come on up. If not, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
I make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance Z-13-18, changing the zoning designation, amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Olson Development Zone Change.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. This also is a roll call vote. Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Passes. Okay. Ordinance Z-14-18, changing the zone designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Renaissance Place Zone Change and Preliminary Plat.
Again, thank you. It's a four-acre site, a little bit over four acres, actually. The proposal is to change the zoning to R3 in order to allow for a 35-home project to be approved. The homes would be townhomes, and this project would be approved as a master plan development in the R3 zone. Property's located at what today is the end of Center Street, just west of the intersection of Center Street and 920 West. It is at a somewhat unique location because we believe someday, hopefully sooner than later, there'll be a new interchange located here. Some of you'll remember that when we looked at the initial plans and zoning proposals for Ivory Homes Newport Village project that's south of the subject property, we talked quite a bit about what the road alignments would look like leading up to the interchange and different opportunities that might exist, maybe for non-residential development, because of proximity to that anticipated interchange on I-15. And we've had some of those same discussions relative to the proposal that's before you tonight. It's a little bit difficult to really appreciate with this image, but if you look closely at this curb return here and just kind of picture what it would look like to continue Center Street due west from where it is now, actually with a bend even, as we anticipate the road would do, again, to line up perpendicularly for on and off ramps on I-15, this property really is constrained from a depth perspective. There's not a ton of room to use there. Typically, if you have 260 feet of depth to work with, you can do two rows of 100, I'm sorry, two rows of 100-foot-deep lots on each side of a road that's 60 feet wide, and you're pretty well set up to do a road that's lined with single-family homes. And in fact, we asked more than one different developer that looked at purchasing this property to come up with a way to make that work, to have single-family homes on this property. And simply because of the lack of that depth to the property, which is well under 200 and even 50 feet, repeatedly we heard that it just wouldn't work. So for a variety of different reasons, one of them literally being just that simple issue of the property's depth, but also the proximity of the subject property to the anticipated interchange, staff feels very comfortable recommending that this type of a project be approved here, that the property be zoned for something that's a little bit more dense, something that's maybe a little bit more fitting, again, for the property given that particular depth constraint that they have. Kind of back to the issue, though, of the prospect of having some kind of non-residential development potentially approved here. I'm going to really fall back to the discussions that we had when we talked about Newport Village, and we had our retail consultant at that point in time give us a pretty thorough review as to what might be viable at some point in the future. And personally, I think the council at that point in time made the right decision by way of allowing residential development to proceed now, largely because there's some question relative to access to this road and where that could occur. So for example, if UDOT's not going to allow points of access beyond 920 West on that road, then the likelihood that we're going to see any retail user be interested in locating on either of those two properties becomes really, really slim. So kind of that, very, I think, real concern, combined with some uncertainty as to when the interchange would be built. Again, back a few years ago, the decision was made that it's better to allow the properties to develop now than to simply put things on hold indefinitely, you know, with some of those question marks out there. So I think that's part of our thought processes well today relative to supporting the proposal for a little bit higher density on the subject property. With 35 units on 4.3 acres, the proposal's well underneath the maximum density that would be allowed with a master plan development in the R3 zone. There are images of the proposed building elevations in the staff report, but again, maybe just to touch on a couple of things. This is the project to the south, so this is taken from the subject property looking south at Ivory's project, which is under construction. The rail line would go away when or before interchange is constructed. Right now, there's a lane that exists across the subject property to provide access to a parcel to the west. That access to that parcel would be maintained with this project's approval. Kind of more of the same, so, again, looks are things that we spent a lot of time talking I'm going to get real brief here and let you guys ask any questions that you want to ask. Supposed front elevations that the applicant's given us, side elevation, this provided simply because they got feedback that this is on our radar screen, something we're very concerned about. And then the applicant's also, just earlier today, submitted examples of what the townhomes' rear elevations would look like. So the Planning Commission was particularly concerned about the rear elevations that would face exactly the continuation of Center Street. It's pretty prominent, unlikely with some grade change at some point along that, that route. Again, those elevations might be even that much more prominent. I don't know if you got an email that I sent you that has that elevation with it, we might want to take a look at that in a second. But in short, Planning Commission didn't have any concerns with the elevations that the applicant's proposed. We can take as much time as you'd like to look those over and maybe provide any thoughts or critique. Rear elevations here, so they would have some change in plane, that is, popouts, a little bit of relief there, changes in the roof line, things that make it more interesting than other townhomes that we have elsewhere in the community that also back on to some pretty prominent roadways, very visible elevation. So I think the applicant has met all of the expectations that staff has raised for the project, and said the same about the issues that were discussed in the Planning Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. And we feel very comfortable recommending the proposed master plan development with the zone change to R3 be approved.
Okay, thank you, Dave. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that'd like to come up and address this, come on up, state your name, and go ahead and address us. Might want to pull that mic over just a little bit to you. Thank you.
My name is Eugenia Mendieta. I'm a neighbor of that, of the dollhouses. I just live just across the street of the police station, and my family and I, we're living there for about three years now. And we chose that place because it was a very nice place and calm place. But now, the city sold the land over there on the corner, and they built a lot of houses over there, as you know, and there's a lot of traffic now. And the city has improved the, all the, all the traffic, all the traffic tools to improve the traffic. You haven't done any, anything, not even the company. So with these houses, it's going to be worse. And we feel sorry for the place because I've been living here in Spanish Fork for almost 10 years, and I came from California, and I met my wife here. She was living here for 20 years, and she loved it. But now, Spanish Fork is growing, and I know a lot of my neighbors, which I don't know why they're not here, but maybe because I've been talking with a lot of people there, but they're not planning to stay for a long time here. So that's why they said, I'm not planning for living more, living here for more than five years. I don't care if they're building something. But our plans for right now is to stay a little bit longer, so it's affecting us. This place, right.
Right here?
Yeah, the new buildings, no, right there, no, the one on the bottom.
Right here?
Yeah, I don't know what the name is. And, yeah, as you can see, they don't have any parks there. They have to walk right this way, the nearest park, I don't know where it is, right there. But our park is really small, very small. People, I've been seeing a lot of old people walking this way in front of our houses because we live right there, trying to go to this place. They prefer going to this place, going right here, instead of going here. I don't know why, but I believe they don't, they don't like to walk all this way and get into the park. What I'm saying, this is a small land, area of land, which, I don't, I know, I'm sure that you already sold it, and I'm not the owner of the, of the land. It's theirs, it's their money, but it would be a good idea, a park, because these people has no park, as you can see. Where is a park? Nothing. And in the future, this guy is going to sell, is going to sell this land too, because this is the last thing we have. Police station is right here, and I've seen here a lot of traffic now. When we started living there, two years ago, one car every 15 minutes. And then now, it's getting crazy. They, they go fast, even though they don't respect the police, and you don't have signs here. The only sign here you have here about the speed limit is right there. The only sign here you have here about the speed limit is right there, somewhere right here, but nothing here. And they don't respect, in the morning about after midnight, still you can hear a lot of cars speeding, and the police is right there. They don't respect. And they go this way, go that way, and very fast, you can hear it, boom, I don't know where they're going, boom. With these guys, townhouses, there are going to be a lot of people there, which is going to affect us this. I believe in the nineties when they built these houses, it was very nice, and those people liked it. But I've been seeing a lot of people moving from here, old people, young people. Well, that was my concern. I don't want to talk too much because, I believe it was three minutes, but yeah, and I believe you sell this and you build this, you have to improve this. This company has to improve these roads, because if not, it's going to be a chaos. Because I was living in California, which is a chaos right now, and I moved from California here, and it's different right now, but it's getting the same.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else would like to come up and talk about this? As long as you have something different to say than what your husband said. We don't want to repeat it.
Okay. Well, my name is Ruth, I'm his wife. And, well, I don't want to repeat the same like him, but where is the police station? Is that A70?
Station right there.
Yeah, that one. It's a place my son cross every day from the school. Since they build the new houses in the other part, I don't know how to use that thing.
Just push the little button on the side.
Oh. Since they build those houses here, my son cross from here, I'm sorry, from here, and nobody stopped to, because they saw him, but nobody stopped. I need to go outside of my house, step outside in the sidewalk, and see if any car came from any both sides. And I need to tell my son when it's time to, he's 15 years old, and I need to tell him when is the time he can pass. I saw the guys, and I tell them stop or go slow, they don't care. They don't care, because there's more people now.
So, where does he go to school?
He's on Spanish Fork, no, the junior high. But he took the bus, the 100 South. He took the bus over there. But it's more kids, not just my son and other kids from, I believe, those houses. They go to the Spanish High School, and they are the same. They are the same. Sometimes I need to stop in the middle of the road and stop the little traffic, because another kid from another houses, I believe, over there, over there, I don't know, they go to the high school, and nobody stopped. It wasn't the morning around 7:00, 7:20, no, they don't stop. When they build more houses here, like my husband say, it's going to be more traffic. We get the house that A66 West, Center Street, three years ago, we saved for four years. I'm kind of a sick person, I'm a depressed person, I'm under medication most of the time. This afternoon, I took a new scan from my brain, and that's why we looking, we was living the 200 West, 200 North, but those apartments are kind of really crazy now over there. And we saved for four years, our savings to buy the house over there. If they build more houses here for me or for my health, it's going to be more crazy, depressed, living in the middle, so many noises around 12 and through the week. And people there coming so fast, or teenagers, I don't know, and more parties, they move more people over there, not just in Sunset Park, and the other place here too. We need to, if it happen, if they build more houses here, I think we need to move. Move another place, yeah, that's okay, that's okay, we can do that, but we don't have the money for that. It's really expensive. You know, the interest is really expensive, buy another house far from, I moved here because I have a brother live here since the nineties, and he was really calm. I visited him so many times, and the neighborhood was nice, more nice people live over there, not anymore. They move, they die, something like that. And, well, maybe we can move, we can sell the house and move another place, maybe the company say, "Sell it and go away." Yes, I can do that, but I don't have the money to make another, to buy another houses. Right now, they are really expensive. Move another estate, it's going to cost me a lot of money. I have two kids, and I have a family. I was living in California for so many years too, but I don't like it. I like Utah, but we choose the Spanish Fork because it's a better city than other cities around here. But I, I'm not happy when they build more houses over there, but I'm so worried if you allow to them to build more houses. I asking you, don't give the permit to build more houses over there. How about a park, like my husband says, some green spot over there? I don't walk outside because my health. I don't walk, but if it is the park outside, very close, my house is the fourth house here, I can, those are a few steps, I can walk, or just sit on the bench and take a little bit of fresh air. It's going to help for me, my health is going to be better. And you know, if somebody don't believe me, we can talk with my doctor, and he'll tell you about that. Okay? Well, thank you.
Thank you for...
Thank you.
Bye.
Anyone else would like to come up? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Is that moved?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any comments, discussions?
So, Dave, can we go back to the plot? That shows, button right there. What's this going to be?
Freeway.
Well, yeah, between now and then, is that just going to be dirt? I know the railroad tracks is here and going to stay.
Yeah. We don't have a great image to use, but you can see here where Ivory Homes has built a wall, and they've done the required landscaping on the outside of the wall, or they're in the process of finishing that, I'm not sure exactly where they're at. That's what it will look like along this property's frontage. We haven't talked to the applicant about them improving that corridor necessarily. You can see that without some attention to the corridor, you know, it's not, it's not attractive.
So, is that, so that'll, so that'll be a fence on that south side of that development, then? Is that a rock fence?
It'll be a masonry wall.
Masonary wall, right.
Probably look very similar to, again, what Ivory's done on the other side.
So, a little bit to their, to their questions concerning the traffic. I know that road that's, that road that turns and goes is very narrow along there.
Along the west side of the existing subdivision.
The whole city block plan. There you go.
So, yeah, so the frontage here will be improved, so that will add some width to that road here. We don't anticipate them constructing any part of this roadway for a lot of different reasons.
Right.
But they would completely construct everything that's, that's outside of that right-of-way, if you will, or at least outside of the travel lanes along that right-of-way. And I'm trying to think of some way maybe to put this delicately, but, you know, we as the city, we're hoping to have an interchange here someday. That's an integral part of reducing traffic, which otherwise would probably be unmanageable on Main Street and maybe even on some other streets in the community. And we know that that's not going to happen, you know, in the next five years. We'd love to see something happen maybe in the next 10, but that, that would change the traffic issues on Center Street this far west dramatically if that were to happen.
And we're building this here. Eventually, that will be a five lane, right, all the way? Volunteer drive all the way to center?
Yep. Okay. Another thing that, you know, they're talking about parks, and maybe, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, Seth, here, we've talked about this property here, putting grass in there. Is that still a, okay, so, this area right here, all this area right here, we're going to be making that into quote-unquote a park. It'll be grass for the time being, so I think that's in schedule to be done next year. So, that'll give you more open space, more place to go here than that. But it's just like everything else, property owners, as long as they meet the requirements of the city, the zones that they have right now are entitled to do what they wish what's best. I was born here, lived here my whole life, this was all fields here. And when this was all built, if you'll notice, those lot sizes are a lot smaller than everybody else's, so there was a lot of people, a lot of cars, a lot of traffic, increased a lot of traffic when this whole area was built here. And so, I know the people on the other side and over here probably weren't very happy either with that many cars coming in. I wish I could say that we're going to make big spaces and everything, but, you know, these people have the right to develop, as long as they meet the ordinance, you know, they can do that, so. But this should help. We'll have some more green there, more grass, and maybe more park areas. Any other comments?
Just one, Chris, and I don't know if this is, if this is something we can affect, the nearest crosswalk is, is up closer, well, on, what is that, 620, 630, right in front of SFCN, cutting across, is there, and it may be after, after this development builds, but is there a way that we can study to see a need for an additional crosswalk? Or is that something that may, even if we can do it, may go away because it would be too close to the interchange? Just trying to think of the kids' safety.
I can guarantee you it would not warrant one.
Okay. That would be the closest one.
Especially where you have basically a ride-in intersection there, there's basically no traffic.
Nobody can hear you at all.
Not that they want to.
I, we would, we could do one, but I am positive it would not warrant another crosswalk there.
Thanks.
I would just say, I used this, mentioned this as an example with my meeting that I alluded to earlier with the League of Cities and Towns and the state governor's office, was this is a type of development where density in 35 acres over four acres, you know, puts us at, you know, what about eight units the acre and change, which is not considered even close to dense in some communities. For us, it's, in Spanish Fork, it's dealing with growth and different things, it's, it's in the, you know, medium dense range, if you will. But the reason why this was, was brought up was because this is, in some respect, what we've got to start looking at, I think, from a city's perspective, is the higher densities closer to transit and what's going to be considered transit in the future, even though that interchange, like Dave said, is anybody's best guess, but it could be a decade down the road. We hope it's quicker, frankly, but, but it makes sense that a development like this is going to be close to what will get people on and off the freeway eventually, and what will get people on and off light rail eventually. And that's really what the state and the county's future is proposing, is developments more like this that, that us cities can look at that are called transit-oriented developments or TODs. And so, so this fits in a, in a mission, I guess, of what you will, that where, where people can afford some homes but still live in a nice place. I appreciate the applicant making some changes to the, the back end of those units, because this is going to be, I think, a, an on-off ramp in the future and a welcome for some respect to Spanish Fork City. So, applicant, I appreciate the, the nice product you build already, but I appreciate the visual relief on the backside of here too, because a lot of people are going to see it in the future.
I just want to echo what Mike said. I think, thank you for making the effort to make it look good and to put a fence up. I think that'll be good, and I think it's the perfect place for higher density closer to a future on and off ramp, so.
I was, sorry, Mayor, one question on the west side of it. There's a ditch that I was asked about. I don't know if that ditch is still open or if that's piped, but there's some, there's somebody that waters on the other side of the freeway there that a pipe actually goes under there. I don't know if it's a section away from this development or if it runs right down the, the west side of this. Does the west side of this have a, Dean, maybe you can speak to that?
It has a ditch on the west side. Nobody can hear you.
Sorry.
There you go.
Dean Ingram, sorry. I believe it's, I think it's piped on this side.
You got a pointer right there, the black one, no.
There we go. We got a button for it and everything. I believe it's piped through here, but I think it's a ditch, and it carries on through here, and it, it picks up under a pipe that goes underneath to that, to that west side, which would say the same.
I guess the concern is your development, putting some, some family homes, that there's going to be some families living in here, and then your parking lot, is that just right over to a ditch, or do you have a wall on that side as well that's, so we are fenced there too?
Wall here, and then a wall comes right through here, kind of, in the, there, and then fencing, and the whole thing's enclosed, basically.
Okay, perfect.
One comment I did want to make too, just on talking about that, so this is the exact same product that we built, where we built same size, 30-some-odd units, right in the middle of Traverse Mountain amongst million-dollar homes up there, and the people up there love it. It doesn't take away from the community at all. It seemed to be a good addition. Actually, both my daughters married and moved up there. It's a nice convenient place for them. I don't want to be there, but they can deal with that. But it was also a couple days ago, I don't know how it ended up in the, the growth article in Deseret News, that's, that's our product in Traverse Mountain. It's on the picture that two days ago. So, anyways, should, I think it'll look good, and we try to do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance Z14-18, Renaissance Place Zone Change and Preliminary Flat Approval Request for a Master Plan Development on 4.3 Acres, located at 41 North, 920 West.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, second by Councilman Argal. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Scopes?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Argal?
Aye.
Councilmen Mendenhall?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Okay, Ordinance Z15-18, changing the zoning designation and remending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Spanish Fork 711 Zone Change.
As we can read there, the proposal is to change the zoning from residential office to commercial to residential office zone, certainly allows for some non-residential uses, but nothing that's quite as, as intense as a convenience store would be. So, for that purpose, the property that's immediately west of, it's a laundromat today on the corner of Third South and Main Street, property immediately west of that, or at least a good part of it, the part that's outlined in red here, is proposed to be changed from residential office zoning to that. from residential office zoning to that, that commercial two zone. The purpose of the proposed zone would be to accommodate a 711. Pictures of the subject property there. Might come back to some of those. Let's just kind of get to the heart, though. This is the purpose of the proposed zone change. So, if approved, understand the applicants would like to move forward to develop the property in some fashion that'd be close to what's shown here with this image. In this case, maybe just for some perspective, this new building would be approximately where, be set back a little bit farther from Third South than the existing home is on that property, but that's where the building would be. So, the existing laundromat building is further to the west. That would be raised, and a new building would be constructed over here. Planning Commission had a pretty, pretty lengthy, robust discussion about the proposal and the impact that it would have on adjacent properties. And without a doubt, and we certainly acknowledge that with changes like this, there are impacts on neighbors, and we have provisions in our ordinance that are intended to mitigate those impacts and to limit them to the greatest degree that's possible. But yet, I absolutely would acknowledge that even with that, still, these types of changes would undoubtedly create impacts on certainly the immediate property owners. A lot of the discussion that we had in the Planning Commission meeting also centered around traffic on Third South and how problematic that is today for many different perspectives, including people residing directly adjacent to Third South, being able to enter and exit their driveways, and different things like that. It's particularly a problem at the intersection of Third South and Main Street, simply because of the lines, you know, the queues get to be a certain length, and that creates problems. We certainly also acknowledge that that's a problem today. Regrettably, I think we also have to acknowledge that it's going to get worse before it gets better, in all likelihood. And I'm not trying to persuade anybody with what I'll say next, but frankly, those are problems that will continue to grow and will require attention regardless of what happens on the property that we're talking about tonight. Traffic on Third South really is much more so the result of development that's happened east of Main Street and some constraints that we have in our community relative to a lack of east-west transportation routes. It's partly the result of some topography that we have, you know, with a, with a ridge and some different things like that. So, a fairly large part of the community, in one way, really is funneled through this Third South corridor as they get to where they want to go on Main Street. And again, those are issues that our staff's aware of. We're working with UDOT to get plans in place to improve the Third South and Main Street intersection, and, you know, not to in any way try to minimize those concerns. Relative to this particular proposal for a zone change, frankly, it is fairly easy for me to say that this will not impact adversely how Third South functions in any significant way. That's much more so, like I said, the result, I believe, of growth that's happened to the east, and that frankly, for a while at least yet, will still continue east of Main Street. To that point, I just want to mention the city's general plan. You know, this really is our blueprint for zoning. The blue color that we have here, this being Third South, so the subject property's right here, that is a mixed-use designation. That's something that we've used along several different transportation corridors that carry a lot of traffic and that probably carry volumes of traffic that will continue to grow into the future. And that color, you know, with it being mixed-use, among other things, does suggest that land use adjacent to those roadways will change. Does to say that over time, frankly, I don't think it'll happen in a, in a really great, or to a great extent in my lifetime, so in certainly decades into the future, there still probably will be single-family homes that front onto roads like Center Street and Third South, but over time, we would expect there to be some evolution to those land uses as well, so that if there are residential uses that are adjacent to those streets, they probably are accessed a little bit differently than driveways that you, you back out from and, and those sorts of things, and probably even would have a mixture of residential and non-residential uses all along that corridor. And again, it's not to say that that's going to happen in 2018, or '20, or '30 even, but probably over a much longer period of time. But that really is the result of the anticipated traffic volumes on roads like Third South. So, the proposal that the applicants are making tonight to make that change from residential office to commercial two, to accommodate a bigger site for a contemporary, you know, a new retail use on the corner, just from a land use perspective, that, that is consistent, I believe, with the city's general plan. And certainly, like I said as well, would result in impacts that we would work to mitigate. But that also is, I believe, a healthy part of the city growing and evolving. And that being said, both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission have recommended that the proposed zone change be approved relative to the particular site design that the applicants have included in your staff report and looked at for a moment ago, or for a minute, just a moment ago. We do anticipate that that, that would change a little bit as they move forward, but they will have to meet the city's requirements as they do that, and we'll be working with them to do everything we can to, to mitigate how this site's development would, would impact those neighbors.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scholes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that'd like to come up and address this zone change, feel free to come up. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Oh, come on up. Don't hesitate.
If you were debating who it is.
Oh, okay. Just state your name.
Paul Brockbank.
Okay.
And we were, myself and my family at the last zoning committee, as were several others here that live in that neighborhood. I'm born and raised there. Don't live there now, yes, if I could see the satellite. There was a lot of discussion regarding, obviously, the, the business there. Again, I lived there most of my life. There was always a business on that corner, whether it was Gordy Swans, or whether it was 711 in the past, or, or the laundromat now, what have you. The laundromat now is not a convenience store. There's not a lot of product that comes out of there, per se. So, would that impact that? You know, hard to say. We're speculating on, on whether that's going to be good or bad. We're talking about the 300 South being an incredibly busy road. No one could dispute that, right? So, whether 711 goes in there, or any convenience store goes there or not, UDOT, that's a state-owned road, they're looking at that one way or the other. The people who spoke that night from the neighborhood, a lot of it was from emotion, which, again, I lived there, I didn't speak at that. I feel that same thing. My mother still lives in that home. Would it affect her? Of course it will. But again, tremendously busy road, that doesn't just back up to First East. I think we all agree that backs up to 300 East, you know, at different times of the day. So, I think everyone else, you can't get out of your driveway, all of that. Everyone agreed with that, right? But we also talked about Sippin right here, very small business. It's always been a business, again, my whole life, but being the business that it is now, and you all know this, and that traffic backs up all the way up and down this road, coming off of here, people coming to the south, you know, they stop right in the middle of that road. People trying to get to this way stop right in the middle of that, as they're trying to merge into there to get to that drive-through. So, everyone agreed that that is a bit of a problem. That compounds the problems on 300 East. Hard for me to believe that a business twice that size on that corner with gas pumps will not only, not affect it, but will make it better for that traffic. That seems a little unreasonable to me, where a little business like that can really disrupt this. This will not at all. From having been a convenience store there in the past, I can say, from having lived there, right, wrong, or indifferent, there is a lot of litter and a lot of trash that comes along with that. When I lived there and had to clean that up, out of that ditch on the lawn, a lot of it had a logo on it from that time with the big seven on it. They can't control the people once they leave there, but that's just kind of a built-in problem that goes along with that. The other concern would be, and I can't really say for sure, when 711 was there before, if that was a 24-hour business, and I don't believe it was, but I can't say one way or another. Sure, the 711 folks could speak to that.
It was.
Okay, so it was. So, much smaller town at that time. I remember a lot of the police officers were actually there in the middle of the night. Probably made it a little safer area. I don't think that's going to be the case now. A 24-hour business in a quiet little neighborhood like that, right, wrong, or indifferent, again, brings a kind of a whole different element to a, a kind of a quiet little neighborhood there, so. Good? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming up, Paul.
Sandra Stokes, I'm also a family member. You know, when we were here at the commission, one thing that really disturbed me when we were talking about this was Commissioner Mendenhall said, you know where your mother lives, really, he used the word that you used earlier that I guess I can't use, this is where she lives now, that really... And I thought, you know, that's a shame, because that was a beautiful home, a lovely home. I loved living there. I, my, my parents kept it very nice and lovely. And when you talk about Spanish Fork pride and progress, and you talk about beautification, she was right there, and she has a hard time. You know, we all try to keep it as nice for her as we still can. She was a very great example of that. And I just kind of was really upset that he would say, yeah, where she lives now, that really is a bad place. Well, it has never been a bad place. Maybe decisions that have been made city-wise has kind of contributed to that being that way, but it has never been that way. And I'm really proud of her and my parents, who really took good care of that place, who have been great contributors to Spanish Fork, who are still, you know, Spanish Fork pride and pride people. So, I hope that you would consider it, and if nothing else, please consider not having it be a 24-hour business. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up?
Kathy, you don't want to say anything? You're, you're filling it, right?
Way to call her out.
I, I can tell she wants to come up. I would love to hear what your opinion is. You're right next door.
Well, I kind of think it's a done deal. I mean, I really think you guys are going to approve it anyway, even if I opposed it totally. And I really don't feel like I can totally oppose it, because it's always been a business there. And that, actually, when 711 was there before, it was better because they took care of the property.
I agree.
And that, they do not take care of the property now. And that I've had to fight with them. I mean, to burn weeds, he tried to burn them and burnt the fence, for heaven's sakes. You know, I mean, it's just not good. As long as I have a nice, big fence that keeps the sound out and that, then I, you know, I just, I know it's going to be there, so, anyway.
Thank you.
That was my thoughts.
Thank you, Kathy.
Hi, Brett Palmer. I'm with Mountain West Commercial Real Estate and the agent that represents 711. I'd just like to point out, help you understand that the, the, every business model is a little different. I represent, for instance, Wendy's, and Wendy's has franchisees that have many, many locations, whereas 711, they only allow them to operate one, maybe two, and then after two, they have to get special approval that goes quite a ways up to be able to operate more than two locations. And the reason that they do that is so that they are there. They're, they're not operating it as, as an investment where they have some manager that's operating it and, and not as concerned with it. So, they, by having them, the franchisees only operate one or two locations, preferably they're local people, and they're there in the store, always managing it, have that pride of ownership and operation, rather than just simply a business that they're investing in, that's a guy from, you know, wherever, that's just investing in. So, they, they do that because in, in doing so, they keep a better store and they, and they connect better with the community. And so, that's just a point of clarification, is kind of why they hopefully keep it clean. In doing that, they go through an extensive amount of training to be able to help address whatever may come as a concern. For instance, let's say the litter, or, or the, you know, people that come and shop there. And so, they, 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 they do, not only are they concerned, but then they have the training to make sure that they keep it a very clean and, and well-run operation.
Right. Thank you.
Do you know if this one's going to be a 24/7, or...
Yeah, all of them are in the state.
Okay, that's what I thought.
There's only, there's, all of them are in the state.
Okay.
I think there was one exception that was years ago, but they are...
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's actually safer that way, when it's run continually, rather than closed, and so.
All right. Anyone else? Oh, yeah, I knew we did.
Hi, I'm Rochelle Brockbank. I just want to know, can you show me a map of the 711 and what the woods would gain and what Kathy will gain when 711 buys it?
You put the, the plot plan up there?
Yeah, I want to see how much land they acquire.
Probably show the, where we're going to zone it, not that one.
So, can you tell me how much they acquire when 711 gets it, from 711?
How much land they're going to use?
Yeah. What, no, what they get on their property.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I want to know.
Okay. And, you know, do you mind addressing that, or whoever's... I mean, I can tell you what I understand, which is that we, you know, we like maps to be tidy and to not have strange configurations to them and things like that, which isn't all that important, but in this case, 711 only needs this area for their project. That's it. So, we have this remnant that's part of the lot that this home is on, and our recommendation is just to change the zoning, as we could see on that other image, maybe Scott, with the red outline on the property. I think it's like the second image. Yeah, so... So, this would be part of the 711 development. In the Planning Commission meeting, somebody representing Developer 711 suggested that this part that would be a remnant that would be created with the zone change, it's not going to be part of 711's site, that that would then be deeded to the neighboring property owners. I don't know exactly what they have in mind, and we could probably scale something off to give somebody an idea as to exactly how big that is, and I'll let them speak to it further, but that's what was represented. And that certainly, from staff's perspective, that eliminates a potential concern that we have about, you know, having a vacant, landlocked parcel in between people's backyards. So, simply giving that to the neighboring property owners so that they can use it and maintain it, that, I think that's a great approach.
So, Kathy lives on the west, so she gets like half of it, and then the owner on the east gets the other half? Is that how it's working?
Well, that's what I understand, but I'd love for somebody else to speak to that, that's going to be doing it.
What do they get?
Or maybe, so nobody wants to touch that? Am I wrong about what was said in the Planning Commission meeting, that it's going to be split? It would be... I would be, I'm not making that decision, so ultimately, these guys here... I'm just trying to represent what was said in a public hearing a couple of weeks ago. And if that's not the case, please, tell us.
I apologize. My name's Matt Gerch. I'm a developer. My understanding is that was, I wasn't at the planning commission meeting, I wasn't able to make that, but my understanding that that was discussed is, is gifting that land. As for our current site layout, yeah, we don't have, that's essentially excess land, and it makes sense to do the rezonance they laid out here. We haven't, we haven't, I guess our intention is not to make that a condition on approval of the rezone, as with many of the things that are being discussed now, you know, we don't know with the UDOT things, that things that might shift around a little bit, and so, it's not really our intention to make that a condition of the, of the approval, but that was discussed, that that's excess land, and it makes sense to go with the residences rather than...
Thank you. Yes, it's your turn. We've been waiting all night for you.
Mary Brockbank, everybody's concerned about the traffic on Third South. What is a 7-Eleven on the corner 24 hours a day going to help the traffic that's thrown in our neighborhood? And I've lived in there, like I said, for 60 years. I, I, why can't you put up with backing out of your driveway? I've done it for six years, and I never thought anything about it. Now, all of a sudden, it's going to do away with, with my little neighborhood, and it's not right. I just want to put in my two cents where...
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Stacy, do you want to call anybody else up?
Hmm, no. They all look pretty innocent right now.
All right, thank you. I entertain a motion to go out of closed session.
Public hearing?
Or public hearing, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any comments, discussions, questions?
Masonry wall around the outside, all the way around, from Main Street to Third South?
Councilman Argal, thank you. Yes, so, on that, the planning commission recommended, in fact, that the applicants be required to do an eight-foot masonry wall, rather than just the typical six-foot wall that's required. So, that was one of, of two conditions that the planning commission recommended be tied to the project. The other one has to do with relocating their dumpster, which right now is kind of on the southeast corner of the project, to try to relocate that to the north side of the 7-Eleven building. So, thank you for the opportunity to mention that as well. But yes, they would be required, Evan, ordinance would require a six-foot masonry wall, any place that their property abuts a residential use, which would be on the north and east property lines.
And they're talking about doing an eight-foot?
Well, that's what the planning commission recommended.
Because they'd have to come get a variance on that?
You are the only ones that can approve walls that are taller than six feet. Yep.
Okay.
They would come back for that, or the ideas to prove that tonight?
I think you could do that tonight as well. If you feel like that's an appropriate condition, you could go ahead and, and approve it to be built to that height as well.
Like an eight-foot, aye?
Yes, I would. Although, I'm kind of like the fence I have, so I don't know, you know, I don't know. I've been drawing around.
All right.
You could potentially leave it, I mean, maybe, also up to...
Until we study it a little bit.
Maybe we could work with the property owners.
We want, we want to do what the property owners there would like to see. If you'd like, some might not want that high of a fence, some might want it, it's, let us know.
It's, it steps down on the one side, and then it has the wrought iron.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I mean, what?
Careful here.
You have my permission to slap him.
Okay, so it steps down, and so it's lower, it's not even six foot...
As it comes down.
On the side.
Right.
But I, I kind of like that.
The step down?
I don't want the three-foot fence, or whatever it's got to be, so they can see the traffic.
Yeah.
I think we addressed that with wrought iron. And if I had that open coming in my driveway, it'd just be wide open, you know, if it was down so low.
Since I called so many people out to come and talk at the microphone, I thought I would just come join you, so you're not alone.
Okay, okay, you can join me.
So, is it, is it safe to say that for your particular property here on this, on this side, that you would say, "Leave the fence alone"?
Well, the wood is getting old, and that, and so, and it, so I've had to replace a lot of it, so it either needs to have the wood replaced...
Be freshened up a little bit.
And, yeah, and be made taller, or, I don't know, if you can put that cement in between and just run it up, I don't know.
Well, isn't it, when they get closer to Main Street, it's got to come, it can't be a...
No, it has to step down, and that, it already does that, so, that was addressed a long time ago.
So, this, just take a look at what she has. This is, so it's somewhat transparent with the wrought iron.
Yeah, right here.
When you get out.
Yeah.
But see, you could go step this up to an eight-foot all along here, would help block some of the...
Well, when you get back further, you know...
Some of the lighting and all that coming in order to your property.
Yeah, so, anyway, I, while I went up here, I want to address that property that they said they were going to give us, okay? And that, it's not very big, the property that they're going to give us, and...
You can have a thing out of that.
Well, you know what? I'd have to change my whole yard to be able to use it, you know? But I'm the only one that really am affected by that.
But you don't seem to care.
Woods is not, I do care, but it's not going to make any difference.
I mean, you just said you've lived there all your life, so you're used to it.
Well, I am. I knew when we first started there. It's going to get nothing but worse, you know? But I...
Should it get worse? Why are we expecting worse?
Because the town's growing, more traffic, anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, you know...
All right. Okay, any other question?
I have one more thing.
Well, I would, just for you, I'd let you. Come on up here. Did, or can you yell out?
I can yell out.
Go right ahead. I've heard you yell before. No, I haven't. Maybe when I was a kid, walking there to Doc Moody's place.
Wouldn't be all surprised. I just wanted, what are they going to do about, I know UDOT's going to take over, but what are, what are Spanish Fork going to do about the mess on Sippin' across the street? Someone is going to get hit or killed there, I promise you.
Okay.
The way that traffic is, and there's got to be something done.
We'll have to address that. Tonight, we're addressing this, and, but we'll, we'll look at that. Thank you. Did you have a comment? I know we're out of closed, or out of public hearing, but come on up and...
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to address, I mean, it's a little bit unique for me to have this much discussion about the actual site plan with the, with the rezoning that's in front of us. My, while I don't want to downplay the concerns that we've talked about, I also want to be like, maybe be cautious about what stipulations and contingency we put on the approval of the zone change. For example, an eight-foot masonry wall, while we, our full intention is to cooperate and, and to, you know, obviously, we'll have to follow all ordinances and regulations of the property, but we could put stipulations in here with the 7-Eleven in mind, and an approval for a zone change, and then negotiations with 7-Eleven fall apart, and those would, if my understanding is correct, legally, stay with the property and the zone change, because that's the way that the motion was made. So, I just wanted to point out...
Well, and, and that was just a recommendation, I guess, that was discussed. We don't have to put that in tonight, and that might be a condition down the road.
Yeah, I, I feel like there will be a lot of those things that will be addressed with the, the site plan itself approval.
That's probably...
And so, I just request. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, any other questions from the council?
My comment, I appreciate the people, neighbors, especially in the, the area here, that, that have came and come to this meeting and the previous meeting and voiced your concerns. I think that's the, that's how we get through these, these land use issues, and they're best done locally, instead of, instead of at a higher level, so we can discuss the issues and, and like Dave mentioned, try to mitigate the effects of impact. Just going back to the previous discussion we had about a zone change for some higher-density homes on Center Street, the, the Menditas, I, I've neglected to mention, but of course, their, the safety of their child crossing the street is, is what's on our mind as elected officials, and we want to try to mitigate that risk of, of their, their son ever having an accident there. I think we, we got some good, luckily, they've got a good neighbor there that we could probably send an email to the chief, and he'd have someone park outside the department, instead of in the parking lot, maybe watch it for a little bit, give away a few tickets to probably some kids speeding that way, that, that could help mitigate that really quick. Some of the things to, to maybe mitigate here are, are, are not easy to do, but somewhat doable. Some, some things might not be. I do want to say, I think, I know Council, or excuse me, Commissioner Mendenhall, in the planning commission, I'll, I'll bet if he had it over again, he, he would have chose a different word. It's probably, more than anything, it's, it's unfortunate of maybe what's happened around your home that you've lived in for 60 years. I walked that block yesterday, and your home is one of the prettiest homes in Spanish Fork. The, the interesting thing of what we're discussing, again, going back to the previous house plans, the, the multifamily units that we were looking at, your home has the character that now architects are wanting to go back to, and say, "Hey, pop it out here, give it some visual relief, make it, make it look nice with different things," and, and your home has that. I've never had the opportunity to be inside your home, but I'm sure it's... I, thank you. I'm sure it's beautiful inside, too, but it's beautiful outside, and, and you've done a great job for the decades that you've lived there. I've had the opportunity to be in Kathy's home with, with yesterday's stuff. Your home is one of the coolest homes in... You don't want everybody coming there, and with the mature trees on, on both these lots and everything. It's one of the prettier places in, in town, and, and got so much character. So, I, in, in that realm, I think more than anything, it's unfortunate that, that traffic has grown up around you, and it's not your, obviously, your block that's creating a lot of that traffic, it's the east side of town that's grown up. And Third South being Canyon Road has been a main thoroughfare for people to get up to the, to the east side of town. And, and so, that's what's made it hard to, to get in and out of your, your home. I, as I looked at it and walked around, I wondered about this area here. Obviously, it's some, it's some financial investment here of what it would be to, to make a driveway here to pull in and out of, and I know that that garage doesn't aim that way, so you couldn't pull in your garage.
She's complaining about that. She hasn't responded to that.
Yeah, yeah, but this is what we're worried about as far as Sippin' goes, and, and their drive-up that, that was approved here, I don't know how many years ago, but a long time ago. It's, it's us Mormons that maybe don't do coffee, but do a lot of caffeine and Diet Cokes or whatever, that make this a, a drive-up, where this used to be a drive-up for Johnny's going this way, and now it's switched to this way, simply because the, the, the Third South area, I'm sure it backed up into that as well somewhat. I know I was in that street a couple of times at a drive-up. So, I don't know, maybe, again, like the mayor said, solving that problem is, is not conditional upon, on this use here, but, but, but alerting the, our good police force that, that is trying to keep people safe all over this community, to people making illegal turns here and saying, "Hey, you know what? You need to just take a minute, 30 seconds, maybe it takes you to go around the block and come back this way, rather than flip UEs there and, and make that more difficult." The, I agree with the, the fence stuff and, and trying to mitigate that as much as possible. I watched the planning commission, and I appreciate the details of trying to reduce the light pollution there, and, and make it so it's not a, an impediment on the, on the neighbors that are still residential around this area. And again, I appreciate the discussion that was had there as well, that this is not probably a destination location, but, but a convenience location where people are driving by, so, that's my thoughts, Mayor, sorry.
Good, thank you.
I just have a...
Oh, sure.
Just a couple of things, just to make sure that, that we've, we've reviewed the, the concerns. I think, I think first, a concern was, I don't know that it was really a, a very solid concern, but at least a concern that, that decisions are foregone. Please know, anyone watching at home, all those here, decisions that the council make are never predetermined. We do our homework. I live in this neighborhood, I know Councilman Mendenhall just mentioned that he walked around there. I've been in and around, and up and down, in fact, just this last weekend with my grandson, walking down, down this way. The decisions we make are never foregone or predetermined. We do our homework, and then we do weigh the needs of the city with any development, any homes, any things that take place. So, please, anyone watching at home, please feel free to come to our meetings and express your views and concerns. We do take them seriously, and it is never for not, whether a decision goes the direction that you would like, or whether it does not. Now, worse was a word that was brought up. I don't know that this neighborhood is necessarily worse, or will be worse, with anything that happens, whether it's a 7-Eleven, or an 813, or a 412, whatever stores or, or retails may, may take place. I think a lot of it's point of view. When it was a 7-Eleven, I'm sure there were kids in the neighborhood that enjoyed being able to walk and get a Slurpee, and their point of view was, "Hey, that was a neat store to be able to have so close to home and not have to drive anywhere." The point of view that I have as a neighbor in that area is, there's a business, not to besmirch any owners, but there's a business that, as has been mentioned, has, has run down. And so, it doesn't look very good as a neighbor in, in that neighborhood. That's my point of view. Others have the point of view that there are some beautiful homes there that may be accentuated with a new business that comes in. As has mentioned, already been mentioned, that before, when this particular business was there, they kept things, kept things really pretty nice. Traffic is really the biggest issue, having, living around there, driving through there, and that's not anything, not anything that we're discussing tonight. Traffic, it's logical to presume that there will be more traffic to this location, because more people will be going to buy burritos and Slurpees and possibly gas than the current, the current number of traffic going to wash their linens and, and things like that. So, traffic will increase. Traffic will continue to increase throughout the city, this particular area included. And then, the, oh, the, the remnant land, now that, that was brought up. Is there a concern on the remnant land? Or, because I'm just, so we can resolve the concerns, that was brought up, and I'm just curious as to why? Because I didn't hear a concern about it, other than it's taking place.
Not everybody's against the 7-Eleven.
Sure.
A lot of people benefit from that, even Spanish Fork, because of, they will get money from it. I mean, there are a lot of people, but not everybody who has lived there, or lives adjacent or near, will benefit from this. And especially having it 24 hours open, people loiter and hang out. We just know that that happens.
Right.
So, they will benefit from it, but I don't see how everybody's going to benefit.
So, okay, if I can, if I can do my best to address the, the concern, the question for those that may not have heard is, not everyone benefits from the 7-Eleven? And you're exactly right. Not everyone does. In fact, I'd wager there are people on the east side of town that will never frequent this facility. There are people in our own neighborhood here that will never frequent this facility. So, sure, not everyone gains benefit. I don't know that it's fair necessarily, though, to say that because land may or may not be given or deeded to landowners...
They can park.
That...
Sounds like we need more parks.
I, yes, but that's not quite a park area. I, the, where I'm going with this is, I, remnant land, and there are areas in our city, certainly in this neighborhood, that have remnant land, and the concern for loitering is something that would be greater if that were to stay part of, of the proposed business, because it's offset, it has very little visibility, the storefront, depending on how UDOT, you know, rules if the business is approved and... know, rules if the business is approved and goes in, remnant land doesn't do anyone any good except for a place to loiter. If you look at the, at the Center Street Church Building, there's a remnant section back behind there where people loiter, people graffiti, there's all sorts of things happen. So
Will you get the 24 hours they loiter?
You know, and that may, that may be.
Yeah.
At this
Who's going to control that?
Well, fortunately we do have a police force that's very good.
Okay.
I, I, I only bring that up is it, there, there's only so many things we can do to mitigate in our, in our city and our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods change, things don't get worse, they just change. Our perspective, those of us that have lived in the area and lived next to it for so many years, is it's worse. Someone who moves to town and might move into a house two blocks away have a different perspective that it's not worse, but how wonderful that there are businesses so close to where I live and I don't have to get in the car, I can walk. So it's really perspective as far as how things get worse, merely that it changes.
Can I say something about the loitering or loitering or whatever?
Loitering.
People coming. Over there now, they do not have anybody there and it's open 24 hours a day.
Explain that.
And I have all kinds of stuff going on in the back. So at least with the 7-Eleven, they will have people there that can go out and tell the people to leave or quit smoking their pot or doing this or having sex or whatever they're doing over there.
Jeep, you've got to send some people over there.
Just call and hold me there.
I've had condoms on my face.
Good thing you're not at the microphone right now.
Mendenham is missing.
Sorry, wait.
Wait a minute. All right. Okay, good enough. Anything else? Before we get X-rated, uh, city council meeting going here. Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion, one way or the other.
I make a motion to approve ordinance Z-15-18, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Spanish Fork 7-Eleven zone change.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilmember Beck. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Scobes.
Um, aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mendenhall.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for the discussion. Uh, ordinance 20-18, making assorted amendments to Title 15. Thank you for being here. You know, say I'll get up and leave when you get up dressed.
I don't blame
Dave, I didn't mention the conditions on that, but that's into the approval, right? I mean, the conditions that you guys are going to work with the plat.
It sounds like they are.
All right, there are just a few things in Title 15 that this ordinance updates. One, it clarifies the definition of municipal utility easements and when they are required. Provides a definition for porches. Gives 120 days to submit reimbursement agreements for developers, extends its out a little bit. Those are, those are quite difficult to submit, so that should help, help them have time to get those in. It requires that developers provide certification to us that they will follow the new state code on relocating irrigation facilities on their property, which was just passed this last legislative session, which in my mind is, is nice for us because we don't have to be the referees anymore. There's some set, set guidelines on, on how those type of facilities need to be moved, installed and placed in a new development. It provides a way to, that bonds can be forfeited if a subdivision is not completed on, in, by the deadlines that are given for it. This is a problem. We have more and more subdivisions where developers are just letting them languish for years without getting everything completed and, and so this allows us to threaten to just take their bonds and they'll forfeit it and not have to account for every dollar being spent on things to fix their development. Some comments that we get quite often is, well, go ahead and you do it and take it out of my bond. Well, we don't have the staff to do that and to gear up to do all of that work for them. I think this will incentivize them to do it on their own. The other thing is just clarification that if Strawberry Water is being dedicated, all that is required is that the owner signs the dedication forms. Before it said it had to be executed, which means that Strawberry Water users and the Bureau of Reclamation would have to sign the forms and, and that takes quite some time and it was holding up some developments. We're, we're confident those will get through the process, although it is quite long, once the owner signs it. So that's another change. And then the last change is subdivision bonds are limited to 110%. In the past, we've had 115%, but the legislature has limited that to 110%. So just brings us in conformance with the state code. Any questions?
Proud of you. All right, I'd entertain a go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that'd like to come up and talk about this issue? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Mendenhall.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 20-18, making assorted amendments to Title 15.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Nice, all right, new business. What'd you do? Did he break it?
You didn't hear me the whole council meeting? You missed some great
Oh.
Let's start over.
It worked. All right, Stacy, would you please start bringing everybody up again? All right, let's talk about the housing report. Who's doing that?
Hey, we're going to touch on the PD group survey. Okay. Goodness, Mayor, thank you. You all have a hard copy of a report that we will file very soon with the State Department of Workforce Services. This is something that is now required after some changes that were made to state laws regarding reports that we file, a plan that we have on file pertaining to the city's plans to help provide moderate income housing. So the document that you have there with the cover memo that I prepared, that is a form that is provided by, again, the folks at the Department of Workforce Services and it's populated with data that they provide to cities. And just to summarize a couple of things really quickly, it does show that currently we have a deficiency of housing in Spanish Fork relative to our needs, but in all candor, I think that deficiency is relatively small. It certainly is manageable and also looking out five years at the anticipated future need, which potentially, if the data that were provided is correct, would be the need for some 701 additional families to have housing in Spanish Fork over the course of the next five years. We'll probably issue more than 400 permits for new dwellings this year alone, potentially making some other changes, you know, maybe to rules on accessory apartments and different things like that. Frankly, I think the data that we have here suggests that just in Spanish Fork City proper, things are being done to help mitigate the, you know, overall situation that exists with housing along the Wasatch Front. Of course, at the same time, housing is not a city issue. People make choices on housing on a regional basis, at least for the most part, that's how it works. So we're definitely part of a bigger whole, but you know how we've grown, you know what changes you've made to our regulations to permit some different types of housing to be built in the community? And I'm really anxious, in fact, to get this report submitted to the Department of Workforce Services to get their perspective on it. I almost hope that they grade them and I'm anxious to see how we grade out, you know, as they maybe compare us with other communities. So you need to review the findings of this report. The version that's before you tonight is a little bit different than what was delivered with the agenda last week. The changes frankly are pretty minor. Scott helped clean up a couple of things on the form itself and we've added some, some verbiage, but the requirements that we have in the state code that, that we want to follow are such that you as a legislative body are to review the report. Again, you've had it for several days. I suspect that the majority of you have had a chance to review it and that, that you've done that. I'm happy to talk to any specific aspects of the report that you'd like to tonight. And just a quick rundown on next steps on this. So again, we need to submit this to the State Department of Workforce Services along with a copy of our currently adopted moderate income housing plan. That's teed up and ready to go. We need to put it on our website and make the folks at the state aware of where that can be located on the city's website. So that can happen as early as tomorrow. Then looking out a little bit longer range, because of the, the data that's available now with the state, we do think it's appropriate to update our moderate income housing plan with that data. Seems to be a little bit more reliable, I think, than what we'd been working with before. We'd anticipate starting that, that project sometime after the first of the year and probably having a draft to you and the Planning Commission to review a couple of months after that, you know, maybe by March or so, in the hopes of having it adopted, certainly by mid-year 2019. That's something that state law requires that we, we update every five years and the last, the last version that, that you approved as the city council was produced in November of 2016. So even though we're, we're just a couple of years into that, I think now still is a good, is a good time to, to update that plan. Then I also want to touch on another issue. We've talked about accessory dwelling units. We've talked about the prospect of exploring, a couple of different ways maybe to allow for accessory dwelling units on a broader scale in the community. We wanted frankly to kind of let this last election run its course before we started on a different community outreach kind of a project. And Scott, I think, has done a wonderful job of preparing a survey to solicit some input and feedback from the community relative to some specific issues that often pertain to accessory dwelling units. That's live now and we're not sure if we're going to leave it live for two weeks or three weeks or a month. But Scott, would you mind taking a minute to describe maybe how people can find that?
Yeah. So this will be on the website, we'll get this actually posted tomorrow. It'll be on Facebook, we'll do a Facebook post to, to make the public aware of that. The best way to find it on the city's website will be spanishfork.org/ADU and that will take you to a page that will have the survey. The survey is anonymous, so we just want to make sure that residents feel comfortable submitting their suggestions without any, you know, way of tracing it back to who submitted the, the suggestions. We will also be doing focus groups and interviews and so residents that would like to participate in those, there's a separate form that they can provide contact information and we can reach out to them to help participate in those other mediums, so.
Perfect, thanks Scott.
Thank you. So that's item A under new business and then I'm more of, you don't necessarily need to take any action, but if you'd like to discuss anything at all, great time to do it.
So when you do submit this, they will respond back or you're hoping that they'll respond back and tell us?
If we don't get a response pretty quickly, we'll be
On the phone to hear.
Yeah, yeah. In fact, I've been on the phone a couple of different times with a gentleman there who's been really helpful in walking us through some of the data that they've used and we had some questions, some concerns that he's helped us resolve and we have that kind of rapport with them that we'll get their feedback.
The encouraging thing and Dave, I neglected to mention earlier, some of the data that he shared with me when I had that meeting earlier today was fantastic stuff about Spanish Fork and where we're at. And, and it's this kind of stuff that is fact-based and also survey-based from our citizens that is data that helps us not control the narrative, but make sure the narrative is factually accurate. Because I think what you're going to see as a state is, is a lot of rhetoric about what should happen, what needs to happen because what isn't happening in cities. And so I think this is a perfect example of why we need to be out in front of it to say, no, here's the actual data, because those might differ a little bit from where the state actually thinks we are. And taking some steps like ADUs and different things opens up, opens up hundreds of moderate income housing units, you know, just like that. So anyway, good, good work and good data.
Appreciate that. We'll certainly keep it heading your way as we get more things that seem to be relevant. Obviously, housing, it's a big topic in the state today.
Big topic. Thank you. Okay, resolution 1818 regarding Utah housing needs.
You wrote it.
It's the housing night.
I didn't. You would be modified. So last meeting in the work session, we had a group from, it's all like chamber, representing all the chambers of commerce throughout the state, give a presentation on housing needs in Utah and the gap between need and, and existing units and that's, they indicate to us 54,000. As a follow-up, they sent a proposed resolution that they've asked us to adopt that indicates that we will do our part to help address the housing shortage in the state and in our community specifically. So I did go through and make a few changes to it, mainly, mainly their grammar was not very good.
Come on.
So basically we're recognizing the, the issue as they've outlined it to us. One of the things our residents might be interested in hearing, that if the current inflation rate on new housing continues at the same rate it's gone the last few years by, see if they got the year in here. So they say within a generation, so I don't know if that's 20 years, if that's 40 years, but, but I'd say roughly 20 to 25 years. They're projecting that the cost of a home would be over $700,000. There's, there's very few of us that could afford that and so things need to, to take place now that will change the future and make it so our kids and our grandkids can own their own home, can enjoy, you know, the things that we enjoy. And as we've talked several times tonight, our population is booming. The state projections for South Utah County is, is just incredible. We're not going to be left out of that. We can either do nothing and then suffer the consequences or we can plan for it and make our community a nice place to live. So this resolution indicates that we are committed to ensuring housing affordability is attainable to our residents, doing the things that we can. Indicate we'll minimize barriers, including restraining, increasing permit fees, making sure that there are types of housing across all of the, the income levels. That we'll plan for housing development near our, our transit and our commercial development areas, but a lot of times on a national level, you hear referred to as a sustainable community or a walkable community. You can walk to the bus stop, you can walk, if we ever get a front runner, you can walk there, you can walk to the grocery store, you can walk to the park. Also talks about coordinating with our other government jurisdictions, so other municipalities, our neighbors in Utah County, doing some regional planning, how do the roads need to fit together. It's nice if you, if you need a, a big five-way highway, if you've got one that doesn't and, you know, three blocks from where the next city picks it up and then continues with it. And so some of that regional planning is important. We've, we've committed in this resolution to coordinate with our neighboring cities in the county to work on that and to promote collaboration with other communities and lack of officials. So we're joining on some of these solutions. We can and will make a difference in our community, but we can make a greater difference if we encourage our neighbors to work with if we encourage our neighbors to work with us. And that's what the resolution does. And if you're all good with it, be appropriate to act it.
Great. Thanks. Any questions, comments?
I just have one little comment. So those first two, A and B, as I read this, impact fees are a necessity because that's what pays for us to be able to put water and power into them. And of course, they, both of them...
Did you read what they sent us or what we tracked?
Well, what you've got right here, it says, "Review existing practices and zoning fees that would negatively impact the housing affordability."
So I, they did have impact fees, and I pulled that out. We feel here that it needs paid our way.
Okay.
And I, maybe I've forgotten that. And I mentioned reviewing our moderate income housing plan.
Okay.
I think that review, because that is also part of that plan that we're supposed to do...
Is review.
Is that review. So we would have some dialogue with the Planning Commission and City Council relative to that, that question, which frankly, though, we do all the time. You know, as we heard earlier tonight, we've grown. And that's not because we're anti-growth or that we're not, you know, in some ways, pretty development-friendly. So I think, relative to what they're looking for there, we're on the right track.
I think the unified message from the League of Cities and Towns at least is twofold. Number one, not too, all 248 cities are going to be alike in their stages of where they're at in growth. But number two, as far as impact fees go, our residents are anxious about the growth and the changing in their cities. The only thing they'd be more anxious and maybe upset about is if that change was charged to them instead of the fees charged to those that are impacting the community. So you're right on, Chad, for that being removed from this. Because that's kind of the, we already have to abide by state laws where our fees are and have to show what's being impacted, and that's all we can charge. And so for some to try to relay that as, oh, if you just did away with impact fees, you could build this affordable housing, is just not realistic and not even part of the discussion, so. I think it reads well, Junior. Again, I use this document as well in a meeting today to discuss what we're trying to do for our thinking in adopting resolutions like this.
Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve Resolution 1818 regarding Utah's housing needs.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes. Roll call vote, Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Argus.
Aye.
Passes. Canvas of the 2018 election.
Yes.
Take it away, Kent.
So this is not a municipal election this year, so the county did the election. And so we had to step back and ask them to put our ballot question for our RAP tax on the ballot. They conducted the vote by mail. This is the third year that we've done the vote by mail. And it was a big turnout. It was a big ballot. And it was a few machines to vote on with those. And something new also this year, that you could register to vote at the time you voted on that election center. So that's another of the reasons why the line was so long, is they allowed people, this is the first year that you could actually register at the time that you voted on that night. And so I think that's what caused more of the backlog, was to go through that, plus the fact there wasn't enough machines down there. But we, the city, didn't have anything to, we couldn't control that. So the results of this election, this was canvassed along with the rest of the ballot at the county level this afternoon at 3:00. And this information comes from the county to us. It was a big turnout, at 60, almost 69% turnout, which was great. And our question on the ballot was about the RAP tax, and it passed at 66 to 34, 66% for and 34% against. And that was with 11,000 votes that were cast in this election. So if we'll go to the next one, we'll canvas just kind of a little bit how it breaks apart. We have 17 precincts in our city. This is a summary of how our precincts cast their votes. And this one doesn't say for or against, but this tells you how many, the percentage turnout in each one of the voting precincts. So I live in 12. So if you look at mine, there are 919 registered voters in 12. And there were 672 ballots returned for that, for a 73%, which is the second highest in the list there. So good voters in District 12, nice job. Quadrant 12, Sector 12.
They knew their neighbor, get on them about it.
I guess.
We got one that's 100%.
Yeah.
Come on, Kent.
I know, but there, look how little they are. They're little in the town there. I know. Seven, that's PDM's area. That's where that one's at. Anyway, the next slide will show how the distribution went on the yeses and the nos, on how those votes were distributed. And the public can look at those to see how yeses or nos in each of your, the different areas. So in the end, the proposition, Proposition 7, the RAP tax for Spanish Fork passed. Okay, what's next is the city attorney's drafting an ordinance which will be on next agenda in December. The council has the opportunity to vote and to accept this as the public's intent and also give notice to the Tax Commission that we want them to raise our sales tax for our city limits from 6.75 to 6.85. So it's 1/10 of 1% will increase. From there, the State Tax Commission will start to give notice to all the businesses in town to change their tax rate on their machines and their registers, on all their reporting that they charge at the customer that comes in. That'll begin April 1st. And so there's three-month wait to start charging this tax. That tax will be collected from then on by the stores in town. Then the way that they report the sales tax, those stores report on a monthly or a quarterly or annually. But the next time that they report their type of business reports, for example, a monthly one, in April, they would collect it during April, remit it to the state in May, and distribute it to the city back in June. And so there's a lag time between point of sale to State Tax Commission to the city. So we'll start to collect that. Our first major check will come in sometime in June. That's the very end of this fiscal year. And so the council will decide how that one month's distribution will be handled. And then from then on, it'll be collected and remitted monthly to us, from then on at 1/10 of 1%. We anticipate on a 12-month period that around $560,000 will be available to be used in the RAP, the recreation arts and parks and cultural types of things. So with that, this is the canvas. I'll let you accept the canvas by a motion. And then I think there's some discussion a little bit more on how this is going to roll forward for the next little bit. Okay?
All right. So I'd entertain a motion.
I move we accept the canvas of the 2018 election.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we accepted it.
Thank you.
Sign design.
Whoa. Oops. Did you want to talk to you?
Oh, sorry. I didn't even see you there.
Must be my camouflage shirt.
Yeah, go ahead, Dell.
I was trying to be polite and raise my hand.
Yeah, well, I had my head down.
Just for the benefit of the thousands of folks who are at home watching us on television, we discussed in a work session earlier tonight before council, the process going forward, and got some direction from the council. And so we're going to move on this fairly soon after the first of the year. We will first, and we'll send out notice, but we're going to, we've had a lot of people that are interested in serving on a committee. These funds are going to be, any grants, applications that will come to the city will be run through this committee of citizens and some staff. And then those recommendations will be moved forward to the council for next budget year's money that we will have. So this process will follow, we'll send out an application. Those who are interested in sitting on this committee can contact the Parks and Recreation Office. We'll take your information, we'll have an application that you can fill out after the first of the year. And then the mayor and the council will make those appointments based on those applications. And once those are, once the committee is formed, then we can set up grant applications where people can make requests to be able to access this money. And we'll do that in accordance with the budget. So there's a lot of policies and procedures that need to be made still, and we'll start tackling those right now. But we're going to, we're going to move on that fairly soon and get things rolling. So we're prepared to start the new fiscal year with some additional funds. Thank you.
Thanks, Dell.
Thanks.
All right, now we'll move on to the signed design contract.
Little change of pace. This is, we'll have a little fun with this one. So what different logos, I'll just ask the council, what kind of, what different logos for Spanish Fork City do you guys remember the city having in the past?
Oh, cursive.
The cursive with the triangle, looks like a pizza box.
There you go.
We've had some, a cow.
The cow? Yeah, any other ones you guys remember?
Spanish Fork Yourself was the most recent one.
Surround Yourself, yeah. So here's the cow.
People forgot the surround.
We've got our livestock center of Greater Utah Valley up here. No one mentioned the Spanish Fork City with the city in the O. Here's our cursive. This reminds me of a pizza box, I don't know why. And then the Surround Yourself, Spanish Fork City. Well, you're all aware, and I'm sure our residents are aware, that in the last year we've rolled out the new brand, Spanish Fork Pride and Progress. And it's been a hit. Not only has it been a hit with city staff, but it's been a hit with residents. And we've done quite a few different things over the last year to really roll out the brand in our facilities, signage on facilities internally as well as externally, city vehicles, apparel for employees, as well as apparel that we give out at yesterdays and at other events. Some of our frisbees we give out at City Council to scouts that come by, our marquees at the rec office, as well as at the fairgrounds, and our website, we rebranded this year. Now despite going through this pretty extensive rebranding process, past logos and branding still exist throughout the city. And that's primarily throughout signage. Here is a handful of different examples that we found throughout the city of different signs in different states of condition, as well as varying logos. We've got the pizza one up here, we've got Surround Yourself. Some signage doesn't even include any branding, some branding that's completely unrelated to any branding that we've had in the city, some signs that are so worn or misspelled or just all over the board. Well, what we propose as staff to the City Council is we do a city redesign project. Tyler thought that was pretty funny. Didn't get as many laughs here.
That was all Scott today.
Yep. I'm working on my dad jokes, so. So what we propose in the city redesign project, we'd get new sign concepts made. Oh, thank you, Councilman. And the signs that we would look at redesigning kind of fall into these different categories. So first and foremost, we would redesign city park and entrances. So here are a couple of the examples, either redesign or refurbish some of the existing signs and make them have existing branding.
So we can redesign Provo, so?
So as an example, we've got a few marquees, or they call them monument signs that are structures, right? So what we would propose is that we implement a couple of these at main entrances to the city. Other entrances to the city, we would have something that's a little bit smaller scale, right, a little bit cheaper. That's one example that Provo has. So that's one example. Another category that we would redesign would be pavilions. Here are a couple of different examples of pavilion signs that we have that mark, you know, whether or not the pavilion's being used that evening and for what purpose. One thing that we would like to add is wayfinding signs at the sports park that indicate left for ball fields, right for pickleball, soccer this way, make it a little bit easier for our patrons to know where to go when they get to our sports park. We have a few internal use signs at public facility, or, you know, some of our city facilities that indicate what the facility is and whatnot. We've done a few of those, but these would be included in the redesign. And then pretty much everything else falls into this other sign category. And again, here's some of the examples that we have of those throughout the city. So the purpose of this whole redesign project and what we're proposing to the City Council with this contract is we really want to establish a distinct identity for individuals that come to Spanish Fork, that when you come to Spanish Fork, you know you are in Spanish Fork. You're not in Springville, you're not in Mapleton, you're not in Salem, you're in Spanish Fork. And we want the branding to be consistent. We don't want to have our cursive signs out there anymore. We don't want our pizza boxes. We want it consistent across the board. And this is all to create a real positive perception of the city, right, that we don't have patrons coming to the sports park and seeing signs that are worn or outdated or otherwise in disrepair. And lastly, one thing that's really nice about this proposed project that we're going to do is it would facilitate the ease of future needs, right? So we would have templates for different sign concepts. And so in the, in the future, if we need to create a sign that's for no park, or no dogs, or whatever, at a particular park, well, we've got a template, we throw the text in there, we don't have to go back to the drawing board and create a new sign for that. So what we're proposing is working with Red Core Design, who did the rebranding for the city last year. They're familiar with our branding, they're familiar with the city's identity. They've submitted a proposal for us to work again with them, kind of as an extension of the rebranding project that we already did. They'd go create some different sign concepts that we would then go forward with and roll out through the city. So you've received a copy of the contract. We've budgeted for it in the marketing budget for the year, and so there's not any budget impacts other than that which has already been budgeted for. So any questions from the council on this? Otherwise, we just a motion on it, so.
I love it. Thank you.
We're excited.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the signed design contract with Red Core Design.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Fieldstone Agreement and amended preliminary plat approval.
I want to be part of the preliminary plat side as they jump in. We've talked about this a handful of times in both work sessions and in council meetings. What you have attached with the agenda is probably 99.5% the most latest version, there are a couple of clerical tweaks that I think we got back this afternoon, right, Junior? Did you notice that from Mr. Wilson?
I believe we got our most recent change back from attorneys talking to attorneys, just a couple of edits. But this contract contemplates all of the different elements that we've talked about with you in a handful of meetings spanning now maybe the last five or six months. I don't want to belabor it any more than you want to. I'm certainly capable of taking any questions, having any conversations, I can hit the highlights.
Any questions, comments? They don't want to listen to you.
They don't want to listen to me? Come on, I traveled all the way up here.
Mayor, do you have any questions?
Me?
Yeah, you always ask us, maybe we should ask you, do you have any?
Councilwoman Beck, is there anybody you want to call?
I've wanted to comment on a lot of things.
You've wanted to talk.
I've never been asked.
Councilwoman Beck, is there anybody you want us to bring up out of the audience? Should we bring up Chris?
No, I've already asked.
Seth, you did such a fine job that everybody's read every word.
All 56 pages.
And they know exactly what's in there.
So the highlight, high highlights are, we will build this contract...
So the highlight, high highlights are, we will build, this contract says we will build the remainder of Spanish Fork Parkway. We will build the parks, which are two major changes from how the Legacy Farms area has been approved, you know, for the last ten years. Uh, with that, the developer, Fieldstone, will contribute, uh, the funds that they would have put towards the construction, they'll, they will give us those funds to construct those parks. We will take the expensive building, the road, and then recover those costs through, uh, impact fees, which they would have been able to do, but we're, we'll do that, so we'll front the cost and recover those over time. And then probably the biggest addition to it is the payment of a, uh, a large amount towards the improvement of the Rocky Mountain Power Corridor, which to us collectively, staff and mayor and council, is a huge deal. Uh, being able to clean up that corridor will be a tremendous improvement to the area, and frankly, if, as we do this one section that's in the Fieldstone Legacy Farms area, is it hopefully travels, what is that direction? Northeast, southeasterly?
Yeah.
East-southerly?
That way.
That you'll, yeah, you'll have a great corridor that'll span a couple miles, and then it certainly should continue towards the west and even connect to where Springville has a corridor, uh, already constructed, and eventually, I mean, if it goes all the way, it could go to Provo. And so the residents in that area would have a trail corridor that is far superior than what we're, what we were thinking we could do before. So this is a great start in making that happen. Jason Harris is here from Fieldstone, and he traveled all the way from Lehigh, I think.
All the way?
All the way, huh?
Did you pack a lunch?
Dinner. Is there anything you want to say, Jason?
See, that's the right answer.
I should, I should say this, the preliminary plat, major change to the preliminary plat is the, is the addition of a church site. Uh, and, yeah, I, so, anything you want to say, Jason? You don't need to.
I actually have questions, I think it's been pretty straightforward, but yeah, I'm happy to answer any.
Seth, the other change that we talked about is, we're getting to, we're getting to, uh, across the rough enough corridors, makes it a lot more, uh, different as far as getting around.
Yeah, there was one, one connection towards, uh, the western end, north and western end of the project that will now have a connection through the corridor, which it didn't have before, so that was a good change to the preliminary plat also.
Good. All right.
Main highlights, Dave?
That was a perfect summer.
Oh, my gosh.
It was beautiful.
Well, then, if that's the case, I'd entertain, oh, I thought was perfect.
That is, you can take a motion on that. What I want to note, make note of to you is, uh, along with this, we need to do an amended agreement with the original owners, because Fieldstone has an option to purchase that they haven't exercised yet. So if they don't, we, we like this new design with church, with the access through the Mount Rocky Mountain Corridor, uh, we like the ability to be in charge of getting some of these improvements done. We think if they, if they don't exercise the option, we still like where this is going, so we, we need to go back and do an amended agreement with the original signers and have them, uh, agree to that as well. So we're working on that, hopefully we'll have that next meeting. But just so you got the full picture, you know, this is step one, and step two will be, uh, you know, covering the contingency if Fieldstone doesn't exercise their option.
So does that need to be in the motion, or is we do that?
That's just for your information.
Information.
Junior, on your way home, will you stop and get some Benadryl so you can have a good night's sleep? You're sick.
Uh, I texted my wife to get me some NyQuil for tonight.
Okay, good.
Good stuff. Oh, my gosh.
It's just that motherly instinct coming out.
I couldn't go too far tonight.
Yeah, no kidding.
And Seth, I really like your gingham tie.
All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Fieldstone agreement and amended preliminary plat approval. Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Salisbury Home requests for an eight-foot tall fence.
Need pictures.
Yeah, no pictures. Did you go to Ariel and that by the city? We just got this request yesterday, and we've talked about it, both with Salisbury, five hundred South Main Street.
Get up there, little baby.
Scott is...
Sorry.
He got shanghaied for a minute.
Come on, Scotty.
Five hundred South Main Street, so we're talking, we're talking here. So that's a great perspective right there. The Parkview Townhome Development here wraps around and includes this area here. So again, this area right here, this will all be developed with townhomes. The addresses there show where townhome buildings will be, so they will back onto this property line here. We're working right now with a metal fabricator that wants to expand his business that's on this property right here, and with his expansion, he's required to have a masonry wall there. Likewise, Salisbury Homes required to build a masonry wall there, so they in essence would share in the cost of that. So this isn't really about money, but, um, there's a slight difference in the elevation of these two properties, and the idea of having an eight-foot wall here between an active industrial use on a site that's zoned industrial and residential development, I think makes perfect sense. So that's the proposal, we hope that, that you'll approve, uh, that such that either Salisbury or the folks to the east can build an eight-foot wall instead of a six-foot wall, whoever needs it first.
Right. Any questions?
Is there, in the, the site plan or anything, is there landscaping that would take place next to that, trees to also help mitigate dust, noise, pollution, things like that?
Yes. So on the industrial side, they're required to have a ten-foot strip of landscaping with trees every thirty feet to help address those very issues. And on the other side, it's simply going to be, uh, I believe there's a twenty-foot setback between the back of the buildings and the fence, and that's going to be landscaped just like what you might have seen throughout the rest of the project, turf grass with trees and so forth, so, yeah.
Okay. Um, I need a motion. Motion to approve Salisbury Home request for eight-foot tall fence. Do we need an address, or just? Nope, that'll do it.
Let's say the Parkview Townhome Development.
In the Parkview Townhome Development.
Yeah, that would help.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Fiesta, Festival of Lights, parking lot use agreement. Woo-hoo! And there it is, take it away, Dell.
Here I am, thank you. Um, so we have a, uh, with our new golf course event center, we have an interesting challenge placed before us. Um, and that is, uh, when we have events scheduled up there, uh, and the Festival of Lights going at the same time simultaneously, we have a parking issue. And we certainly don't want to discourage people from using our event center if they don't have a place to park. So, uh, we haven't got all of this resolved yet, but temporarily for this year, we have a plan in place. Uh, we're going to first of all, limit, uh, not allowing trailers, uh, hay, hay wagons, those types of things to stage in the golf course parking lot. Uh, we've got new islands and things in there, it's not as wide open as it used to be, there's light poles in the middle, there's just a lot more obstruction. Uh, and so what we've done is, uh, to alleviate that, is we've, I went and visited with, um, with the Pattons, and I will forever, uh, call that the Oak Crest Inn. I know that dates me, but.
That's good.
Prestwich Farms?
Your date is.
Okay, I'm already dated anyway, but I love the Oak Crest Inn. Uh, so that's the Pattons' property now, and I also visited with Mr. Hung with Little Acorn. They have agreed to allow us to, uh, direct trailers and things to go there and allow them, people to park there for the Festival of Lights, uh, between, you know, a certain number of hours we've got in the contract that Junior wrote up. In exchange for us, uh, we've gone up and done some work on their parking lot. I don't know if any of you have disappeared in that parking lot before with any of your vehicles, but it's in really horrible shape. So, uh, kudos to Jamie and Rick and their crews, Chris, they, they were awesome. I mean, they responded immediately, and, uh, were on top of it the very next, the very next couple of days, and, and they've done work up there already and got it fixed up, so I appreciate the efforts that they put forth to drop what they were doing and come and take care of this for us. Uh, but they have both agreed to do that, and we have, we have felt that we needed to have an agreement in place with them. There are some concerns, uh, for liability, uh, using their parking lots. Pattons have had theirs signed pretty heavily that there's not any parking allowed there, uh, but they have, they've consented to allow us to do this and at least try it this season and see how it goes, but they are concerned about liability. So one of the things that's in the agreement is, is, uh, some protection for them, so that if they're, if in the event that there's something that happens with these groups or people that are up there on their property, that, uh, that we'll release them of that liability, which is only fair. Uh, what else have I missed, Junior? Anything else in the contract that's vital?
The hours, you mentioned the hours in the contract are five-thirty.
Yeah, five-thirty to, five-thirty to ten-thirty or eleven?
Eleven.
Cause on the nights we're backed up to US six, sometimes we'll close at ten and won't get done till then, so, uh, so we've made those, those stipulations so that the hours are identified in there, so if there's anything that happens on there outside of that scope, then it's not our responsibility, but. Any questions on those contracts?
No, I don't have one.
You don't have any questions?
Mayor, do you have a question?
Thank you. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Festival of Lights parking lot use agreements.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Take it away, Mike.
I move we adjourn to closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by...
Second.
Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I thought you said a... All right, thank you for all the people that have been here watching us.